Good evening. This hearing of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will now come to order. Today is Monday, October 24th, and the time is 6:06 PM. It's wonderful to be here in Tucson, and thank you all for coming tonight. Let's all begin by rising and stating the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with equal liberty and justice for all.
I'll begin with the folks around the table. I'm Chairman Mathis. We also have tonight Commissioner McNulty and Commissioner Sturts, both Pima County residents and IM as well. The other two commissioners are Vice Chair Freeman and Vice Chair Herrera. And since we're going to about 26 locations across the city, across the state on this second round of hearings, we're dividing up the responsibility, and so not all the commissioners are going to every single meeting. So the other two can watch this via Internet. We're streaming live tonight. And otherwise, all of our meetings are also available for all of you to watch, too. They're recorded and put on the website after they've occurred. So you should be able to find those at azredistricting.org. Other folks at the table tonight, we have legal counsel Joe Canefield, our mapping consultant, Corinne Ubina-Belock, I got it this right this time. Then we have a court reporter Marty Herter, who's going to be taking a transcription of everything tonight. Our chief technology officer is Buck Forst over there trying to make things happen for us. And apparently, if you have difficulty hearing on this side of the room, our speaker wasn't working. And so if any of you need to move and be closer to that speaker so that you can hear better, please feel free to do so, and we apologize for that inconvenience. Other folks here tonight are Christina Gomez, our deputy executive director, and we have two public outreach coordinators whom you should have seen on the way in, Lisa Schmeling and Kristy Olson. Those two women are in the back, and please feel free to go to any of our staff should you have any needs tonight or have any questions or want to give them anything or give us anything. Please give that to the staff, and they'll make sure that we get it. I don't know if we have a translator tonight. Is there a translator in the house? Okay, so maybe if they come later, Ms. Gomez can let me know, but they're not here right now, so we won't introduce them. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear from you. That's why we're all here, is so that we can get input on these draft congressional and draft legislative maps that the commission approved. And there's going to be a public comment session of the hearing that will be coming up after a presentation, and we'll be calling people up. So if you haven't already filled out a request to speak form and you'd like to address us tonight, please be sure to do that. And that form will come up to me, and I'll be calling names later on in the meeting. There's, of course, other ways to provide input. If you don't want to stand at the podium tonight, in the back of the packet that you should have received on the way in is a blue form, and that blue form allows you to give written comments to the commission that will be entered into the record just the same as if you stood at the podium. So if you're not comfortable coming to the podium, or if you need to leave early or anything, you can fill that written form out and submit it either tonight by turning it in, or sending it to us in the mail, or calling it in. You can call us on the phone, and you'll be hearing about all these different ways to provide input. But this isn't your only shot, by any means. And as I mentioned, we're also going to be continuing the second round of hearing to another 11 or 12 locations. So there's more opportunity to keep coming to hearings as well. So with that, I want to make sure I've covered everything. And I think I have. So I will now turn this meeting over to Corinne, who will give us a presentation and overview of the process.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Corinne Cabina-Belock with Strategic Telemetry. I'm happy to be here this evening in Tucson to cover the draft congressional legislative maps presented by the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. Thank you, of course, for attending, and the goal of these meetings tonight is to hear comments from you about these draft maps. The draft maps you will see today are currently under a 30-day review period, so the commission can hear your opinion about these maps.
Our translator just arrived, so I'm going to allow him to come up to the podium. Federal law requires us to provide translation and interpretive services at these hearings, and tonight we have a Spanish translator, Carlos Race, and he will come up and say his message in English and then follow it up in Spanish to find out if there's anybody here who needs those services.
Good afternoon. I do apologize for getting here late. Give me a second. Chair Mathis, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with the Voting Rights Act, a translator interpreter, and interpreter, sorry, will be available at all the public In order to provide the interpreting services that might be needed for the citizens that need translating and/or interpreting services, please contact the interpreter or translator present at this meeting so that he or she can assist you. Now I will read it in Spanish. Presidente Mathis, Comisionados, damas y caballeros, de acuerdo a la ley de los derechos electorales, un traductor e intérprete estará disponible en todas las audiencias públicas a fin de proporcionar la interpretación que pueda ser necesaria para todos los ciudadanos que necesiten servicios de interpretación o traducción. Si necesita la asistencia de un intérprete, por favor comuníquese conmigo. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption, Corinne.
No, we're fine. So again, as I mentioned, the draft maps you see today are currently under a 30-day review period. Just want to say that again. And before I get into the maps, I want to give you a quick overview of the redistricting process.
It's garbled. Maybe if you hold it, Colby might close.
Let me try to, is that any better? It's better now? Okay, no problem. So just going into a quick overview. So Arizona's redistricting process is governed by the state constitution as amended by voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that Arizona's Independent Redistricting Commission redraw Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the most recent census. Due to the 2010 census, Arizona gained a congressional seat, going from eight to nine seats. So what are the requirements of the state via Proposition 106? The new district boundaries must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act, and the districts must have equal population. So criteria A and B are federally mandated. And then, to the extent practicable, the districts must be compact and contiguous, respect communities of interest, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts, and favor competitive districts where no significant detriment to other goals. Just briefly about the Voting Rights Act. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive, the plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights, and the presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. So very briefly, I'm going to go to a video from Bruce Adelson with the Federal Compliance Consulting Group. He is advising the commission on matters related to the Voting Rights Act.
I wanted to spend a few moments with you to talk a little bit about redistricting. I was a senior attorney for the United States Department of Justice in 2002 when the department and my team objected to or blocked your legislative redistricting plan. It's very important to understand that under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which is a federal law, Arizona must obtain approval or preclearance from the Department of Justice or from a federal court in Washington, D.C., for your redistricting plan to go into effect. Under Section 5, under federal law, your redistricting plan cannot discriminate against the rights of minority voters. It cannot retrogress their opportunity to elect whom they want. This is a federal requirement. The federal requirement supersedes and takes precedence over all state requirements, whether their competitiveness, compactness, continuity, or keeping communities of interest together. Those are all very important. But if they conflict with the Voting Rights Act and conflict with the one-person, one-vote requirement of the U.S. Constitution, then they must be revised. The requirements of the Voting Rights Act and one-person, one-vote are paramount. There cannot be any retrogression, discrimination against the rights of minority voters. If there is, the Department of Justice will not approve the redistricting plan. That's what we said when we wrote our letter in May 2002, and we objected to what the Redistricting Commission nine years ago had done. We found that the redistricting plan, the legislative plan, had discriminated against the rights of minority voters, and under federal law, that plan could not go into effect. So that as you contemplate redistricting and look at the various maps that have been provided by the commission, it's very important to understand that the federal requirements under our system of law and government take priority. Those requirements cannot be minimized and must be complied with for your redistricting plan to go into effect next year to enable you to have your legislative and congressional elections. I hope that my perspective as being a former federal law enforcement officer has been helpful, and I wish you continued success with your redistricting process. Thank you.
So just moving on with the presentation. So very briefly, before we get into the maps, again, a little more on the timeline of the commission. So earlier this year, a step one, the commission was established. The commissioners were appointed following a thorough screening process and serve in a voluntary role for the state of Arizona. Tonight, of course, we have Chairman Colleen Mathis, Commissioner Richard Sturts, and Commissioner Linda McNulty, not present, or Vice Chairman Scott Freeman, and Vice Chair Jose Herrera. The second step for the commission were the first round of hearings. So before drawing a single line, the commission held 23 hearings around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public on issues related to redistricting. They heard comments on anything such as geography, communities of interest, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. After the first round of hearings, the mapping process actually began. Per Proposition 106, which we'll talk about in a moment, they started with a clean slate. They then divided the state into equal population and compact grid-like districts. The grid maps were approved on August 18th. Since adopting the grid maps, the commission met more than 25 times to consider adjustments to accommodate all of the state's constitutional criteria. During this time, they received additional comments from the public, as well as draft maps from the public as well. Approval of the draft maps was the next step. On October 3rd, the commission approved the draft congressional map that incorporated changes based on all of the constitutional criteria. They also approved the draft legislative map on October 10th. Which brings us now to the second round of hearings. The commission is currently visiting 25 towns and cities to share the draft maps and to receive additional public input during the months of October and November. Step five will be approval of the final maps. Upon completion of a public comment period, the AIRC will adopt final maps. And then, as Bruce touched upon, step six is preclearance. Because Arizona is subject to the Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, the district maps must be approved by the federal Department of Justice or a federal court in Washington, D.C., before they can be used for Arizona elections. So now, moving into the maps. To show how the commission came to the current draft map, we will show you the progression of the maps through the process. So the map you see here was the congressional map that was approved by the last redistricting commission and was most recently used in the 2010 elections. And this is the blank slate that I was talking about. So per Proposition 106, the commission was required to start with a blank slate, not taking into account any previous election districts or incumbents. Then the congressional grid map. Also, per Proposition 106, the commission started with the grid map. However, the grid map only takes into consideration two of the constitutional criteria, equal population and compactness. So in August, the commission asked that two grid maps be drawn, and on August 18th, they agreed upon option two, which you see here on the screen. Which gets us to the congressional draft map. So after more than 25 meetings, the commission voted to approve the draft map that you see here. In addition to taking into consideration the sixth constitutional criteria, the commission took into consideration public comment that was provided via public meetings, round one of public hearings, comments mailed, emailed, hand-delivered, faxed, and telephoned, any way people could possibly get in touch with the commission. Those comments were accepted, and over 5,000 comments helped develop this draft map. So as you see, we'll briefly cover some of the highlights of the congressional draft map. First, it creates two predominantly rural districts. It creates three border districts, three districts in the greater Tucson region, five districts that are entirely in Maricopa County. It avoids splitting Arizona's Indian reservations, and it creates two districts where minority voters have an opportunity to collect a candidate of their choice. So moving into the legislative map. So much like the congressional draft map, developing the legislative map followed a very similar process. Here, you see the legislative map that was used by the last commission, that was developed by the last commission, which was last used in the 2010 elections. Again, per Proposition 106, the commission started with a blank slate. They then moved to the grid map, which was approved in August. And similar to the congressional map, the legislative grid map only took into consideration equal population and compactness. Which leads us to the legislative draft map. Arizona has 30 legislative districts, and each district elects one senator and two House members. Some other points to cover about the legislative draft map. The commission took into consideration population growth and reduction. In the old districts, population ranged from about 155,000 to 378,000. And the draft map that you see here, population ranges from 207,000 to 215,000. And to comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft map includes 10 districts in which minority voters should have the opportunity to elect a candidate of choice. And the draft map includes three districts wholly within Pima County, and three additional southern Arizona districts, 17 districts primarily within Maricopa County, and nine districts that are primarily rural. So the main reason we're here tonight is because the AIRC wants to hear your input on these maps. There are many ways that you can stay connected. You can fill out a request to speak form at a public hearing and provide the commission with your input. Examples of input might include your thoughts on any of the constitutional criteria, or any specific recommendations for the congressional or legislative draft maps. You can submit your hearing, your input by speaking at a hearing, filling out a public input form at a hearing, or on the AIRC website. And you can visit the AIRC online at azredistricting.org, or call 602-542-5221, or toll-free at 855-733-7478 with any input you might have about the maps. Another important goal of the AIRC is to make sure that you can stay connected through this process. This you see here is a screenshot of the commission's website. The arrows highlight a couple of key areas of interest. Under meetings, you can find future and past meetings. If you'd like to watch any of the deliberation that went into the formation of the draft maps, you can view past hearings by date to watch that input. If you'd like to make comments, you can fill out the public input form online, which you see highlighted here. And finally, and most important, you can access the draft maps. The arrow down at the bottom is one place where you can get to the maps. So if you click on the links there, I'll show you an example of the screen that will show up. This is basically where you can find all the versions of the draft maps. The thing that you see here is that these are different file types, so some might be PDFs or JPEGs. The one that we're going to highlight tonight is the KMZ file, because it's a great way for you to be able to view these draft maps and to zoom in and zoom out, which we'll talk about. If you click on the Google Maps KMZ link, which is circled and red here, this is the screen that you're brought to. So Google Maps is a great way to view the maps, because you can zoom in and out to specific areas of interest. On the left-hand column, you have the ability to turn on and off county filters, filters for population, filters for the different colors. Basically, if you can play around with this and check on and off boxes that are of interest to you, it's just a better way for you to more clearly view the area that you're looking to highlight. So that's an explanation of what you see on this side corner here. Of course, right here, you see a zoomed-out version of the congressional map. So if you zoom into the map, this is the view that you'll get. For the purposes of this example, this slide shows you a zoomed-in look on some of the areas surrounding Maricopa County. Again, you have an ability using the KMZ Google Maps to zoom in and out down to specific blocks or streets to see exactly where those boundaries run. So as I wrap this up, I just want to highlight the commission's website one more time for you, azredistricting.org. On that website, you can draw maps of your own, you can watch current and past meetings, and you can get updates about future meetings as well. If you're into social media, I encourage you to follow us on Twitter at AIRC, the hashtag AIRC, and you can friend us on Facebook. Both Facebook and Twitter will give you an opportunity to get up-to-the-minute updates from the commission. So as I wrap this up, I want to thank you again for coming out tonight to be a part of this process. A final point about these maps, of course, copies are available in the packet that you received this evening. We also have poster-sized versions on the wall over here that you can just make viewing the maps even easier for you. Also, I'm available after the public comment period with any questions you might have about the mapping process, or how to access maps, or how to decipher them a bit better. And of course, the staff is available to do the same. So I look forward to speaking with you, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Corinne. So that brings us to the public comment session of the meeting, and I've got about 75 requests to speak forms, if you can believe it. I think this might be a record for us. So thank you all for being here. It does mean we should limit comments so that everybody gets a chance to speak their mind tonight. And so what we'd ask is if you could try to limit your comments to two minutes. I won't pull you off if you go over two minutes, but if you hear the timer go off, the buzzer, so to speak, please be mindful and just try to wrap it up, if you can, as soon as possible, just to give everybody a chance tonight. Just to restate the purpose of this, it's really to provide input on these draft maps, the legislative and the congressional. And to the extent you can be specific in your remarks, please do so. We really would appreciate any specificity given to changes that you think need to be made, even if you've thought about kind of the ripple effect around it, what we might do to mitigate any ripples that would occur from the changes you're suggesting, because as you know, any change requires changes elsewhere. So we're open to all those ideas, and we'd very much appreciate hearing your thoughts on that. If you like the maps, we'd also like to hear that, too. It's always good to hear, but if it's constructive criticism, all the better. So with that, just a few ground rules to remember. When you come up to the microphone, please adjust the microphone so that you're speaking directly into it, so we can all hear you really well, and that our court reporter gets an accurate transcript. If you could state your name and spell your last name so that also we get an accurate transcript. And if you could also state where you're from. Please don't give us your address, just give us your city, town, or county where you reside. That's plenty. And if you're representing a group, please let us know who the group is. So with that, I think we'll move into the first speaker, and tonight, that is State Senator Olivia Cañero Bedford.
My name is Olivia Cañero Bedford.
Yeah, if you could speak directly into it, that'd be great.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Olivia Cañero Bedford, and that's O-L-I-V-I-A-C-A-J-E-R-O-Bedford, B-E-D-F-O-R-D, from Tucson. I'm the current state senator from District 27. You'll excuse my voice, I'm just getting over pneumonia. District 27 encompasses the central west side and southwest area of Tucson, the University of Arizona, and Pima Community College. I thank you for allowing me to speak. I am strongly and enthusiastically in support of the boundaries of Legislative District 3. Strongly and enthusiastically. I firmly believe you have made a district that meets the number-one goal of the voting rights requirements for this majority-minority district. Legislative District 3 does not pack the district with too many minorities, an important A five-star feature is the compactness. All of these points I have mentioned, I believe, will speak well for the Department of Justice. The only small negative that can and should be fixed is to not break up Precinct 25. I wish I knew the logic for taking away a four-block-by-four-block neighborhood out of District 3. Those 16 small blocks should be a part of District 3, even possibly extending the boundary of 40th Street to the east, almost to South 6th. All of that neighborhood area ties in with neighborhoods to the south. These are all similar neighborhoods, communities that share commonalities. I know, I grew up in that south-side area. I thank you. The commission has done a wonderful job with Legislative District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Georgette Escobar from Tucson. After Georgette will be Matthew Laus, Moher Sidwa, and William Sobek.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Georgette Escobar, and I live in here in Tucson, and it's E-S-C-O-B-A-R. I'm a Latina voter, and I currently live in LD29. And so soon I'll be a voter in new LD2, which, again, I do like LD2, but there's just a couple of things I'd like to see changed with it. Two changes, actually. The first one is we have Latino voters are packed into the draft LD2 at over 61 percent. And the commission should go for that target of 54 percent in LD2. This would be a fair change, which would keep LD2 strong while helping Latino voting power and election competition in other southern Arizona districts. The best way to try fixing minority packing in draft 2 may be to delete the dogleg across southern Cochise County, and maybe you can add voters to LD2 from downtown and east side of Tucson, which would also help Cochise County election competition and communities. Also, the most important part, LD2 should still include part of downtown Tucson. LD29 includes parts of downtown Tucson now, and that would be easy to do by moving the draft LD2 northwest boundary slightly north of Congress Street, using the Union Pacific-Nogales Line Railroad track as the east border in the downtown part. This would help keep our closely-related historic south downtown neighborhoods and people connected. And the current LD29 boundary starts at Congress Street, so the district includes south of downtown, and so should the new district, to fairly represent the interests of the community. And again, I thank you for your service to the people here in Arizona very much, and for listening and considering my comments, and hopefully making some reasonable changes to LD2, otherwise it looks really good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Laos, representing Self from Tucson.
Hello to the commission. Again, my name is Matthew Laos, that's L-A-O-S. I am from Tucson, Arizona. I'd just like to say first that I'm a former Army officer, I am an Iraq war veteran, and I am a very concerned citizen for the entire state of Arizona. I want to congratulate the commission on their hard work, and I want to extend my concern that the commission's work will affect not only the current economic state of Arizona, but the future. And with regards to the entire process, I would like it to consider focusing on the criteria of competitiveness. For me, as a veteran, a former soldier, I can tell you that competitiveness equates to equality, democracy that we're seeing all around the world at this time, and ultimately a better electoral process. I know you have many decisions to make in tweaking these maps. I can't begin to extend to you my thanks on the hard work you're doing to do this with yourself and staff. And again, I would just end by saying the entire state owes you a debt of gratitude for the seriousness of the issue that you are embarking upon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Moher Sidwa, representing Self from Pima County.
Madam Chairwoman, commissioners, and the two who are not here, hi. It takes courage to run for office in a competitive district. That is how it should be. That is our system of government. Bully tactics are a refuge of the incompetent. I suspect the draft maps will hold up to legal scrutiny, as will this committee. I have followed you closely for the past five months. While I may have disagreed vehemently with you at times, I know you are doing exactly what you have been charged to do. If legislative incumbents in the legislature somehow manage to draw the maps to their own liking, it would undermine the principles of democracy and of free people. This brings me to the newly-formed Joint Legislative Committee, which seems to have shown contempt for constitutional provisions, both of this independent commission and the right of a free press under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. This contempt was displayed Friday in a bizarre committee meeting to discredit and undermine you. A member of the media was tossed out not for speaking a single word, rather than for what that legislator thought he saw him mouth. That's pretty thin-skinned. What next? Thought police? This commission has endured a campaign of threats and intimidation, lawsuits, politically-motivated investigations, lawyer lobbyists, and of course, the usual colorful characters who make these meetings such fun. What part of independent do they not understand? If legislators' positions on issues are so anemic that they would not hold up to a vigorously contested general election, then they should not have the honor of representing us and should not run for reelection. I have been very sorry to see this typical Third World mob mentality of intimidation and bullying that you've had to endure these past one, past five months, actually. One-party rule without competitive elections is not the American way. It does not generate the best candidates. Rather, it generates automatons that mindlessly shovel out the same talking points. Do not sell our uniquely-American system of competitive democracy to bully tactics and intimidation by the legislators, who are too lazy or too narrow to get out there and campaign for our votes. Our unique system of competitive democracy is now in your hands.
We should wrap up.
Treat it with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Sobek, representing Citizens for Common Sense Redistricting from Pima. After William will be Harvey Akison, Fletcher Strickler, and Dee O'Neill.
Commissioner, Commissioner. William Sobek, S-O-B-E-C-K. S-O-B-E-C-K, William Sobek. I'm a little confused on the compliance with the Arizona Constitution. It says we're supposed to be priorities, our communities of interest, and geographic boundaries, towns, county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. On one of the maps, Congressional District 1, I counted over 10 counties involved in that. That doesn't comply with the Arizona Constitution. Excuse me. There's some other areas in particular, District 3 and District 8. Buckeye and not Litchfield Park, ones in District 3 and District 8, communities of interest, I stationed up there years ago, and they are connected to Yuma. I don't understand the rationale there. Why with Yuma? There should be a separation there. Camelback, not with Glendale Municipal Airport. They're right next to each other, but they are connected more so, not so with San Luis, San Luis down at the border. So I'm a little confused on this compliance with the Arizona Constitution. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harvey Akison, representing Self from Pima.
Harvey Akison, A-K-E-S-O-N. Madam Chair and members of the commission and staff, thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing. I just recently saw the legislature was attempting to have some additional input into the committee. I sort of, at first, resented it because when we went out with the petitions to amend the Constitution, it was hard work. But then I remember how I got a lot of signatures, and that was because of what was going on at the legislature at that time. So I won't go into the history anymore. But I do believe that, like any sports game, or football, or basketball, or baseball, competition is what brings people to the game. And if we want the citizens of Arizona to participate in the election, we want competition. And so I leave that with you. I know that there are so many other criterias you have to look at, but competition would be good to get people to the polls and to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fletcher Strickler, representing Self from Pima. After Fletcher is Dee O'Neill, followed by Victoria Steele and Matthew Kopeck.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fletcher Strickler, S-T-R-I-C-K-L-E-R. I live in unincorporated Pima County. I think competition has been the watchword so far, and it continues to be so with me. I believe that under the extreme pressures that your commission has been placed, you have done an admirable job of bringing competitiveness to the map that we are now considering. Personally, I would have selected two border districts, as we had over the past decade. And I know you were under pressure to bring in four districts on the border, and you finally selected three, and I think you've done a nice job. While the map of Arizona obviously contains a lot of empty land and very few people, you've had to pull together 700,000 people in each district, and with such concentrated populations in the Maricopa County and in Pima County, the map begins to look rather squirrely, and you kind of look at these borders and you wonder, how in the world did you get there? But I think in District 1, the proposed District 1, you have kept many of the Native Indian populations in a competitive district, being represented fairly by one representative. I believe that in the Legislative District, you have not given as much competitiveness as I would have liked to have seen. Somebody described it to me that if the Democratic side of the political scene won every single competitive district and held all the districts that they currently have, they would still not be in any position to be close to having a closer vote with the Republicans. Thank you. And may I say to you how much we appreciate your volunteerism and the time it has drawn you from your families and your everyday lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dee O'Neill, representing Self from Tucson.
Good afternoon, good evening, whatever we're doing at this point. My name is Dee O'Neill, O apostrophe N-E-I-L-L. I have lived in central Tucson for 51 years. First, I want to thank the commission for all of your dedication to the process of making our elections as competitive and fair as is humanly possible. You have an amazingly awful job. In the, I believe in this process of redistricting by an independent commission above any other process, so thank you for all your hard work. Even though the map isn't perfect, and obviously, when people are complaining about it from all sides, that gives you a pretty good idea you've done a good job, and isn't as competitive as I would like to see it, I would like to register my support for the congressional map as it is currently drafted, because it accomplishes what I believe is most important: more rather than fewer competitive districts, which is good for our state and for our country. Any changes you make should increase, not decrease competitiveness. Voters need to believe that their vote can make a difference, and that is only true when there is true competition between the candidates and their views. From my point of view, living in central Tucson, I believe this draft map accomplishes several important goals. One, it ensures that the Voting Rights Act is adhered to, and also provides a third district for, a third representative district for Congress in the central city and the Tucson area and southern Arizona. Tucson also has more in common with the unincorporated portions of Pima County than it does with the cities that have incorporated in the northwest side of town. So I would urge you not to change the way in which you have included northwest Tucson, who has much more interest in, much more in common with Panal County, by including them with the Panal County, including some economic development that's been going on between the city of Morana, town of Morana, and Panal County. Also, your map helps keep the community of interest along I-10 together, and I think that's a good thing. Tucson should have one-third of the congressional districts. For the Republicans to complain, because they only have four for sure Republican districts, when by registration, they only have one-third of the voters, is unhealthy for a democracy and the state. It isn't really wise for races to be decided in a primary. So for all these reasons, I support this draft map, knowing that you will have to tweak it more, but hopefully only to provide more competition. As for the Legislative District map, I believe it does need a lot of change. As it is now, if anyone other than a Republican won all of the Democratic-leaning districts and all of the competitive districts, there would still be no chance of ever having a majority of representatives in the state legislature be other than Republican. Guaranteeing that Republicans will control the legislature is bad for all of us in Arizona and for our state as a whole. Many countries with only one party in power are usually called authoritarian or dictatorships. I urge you to reconsider and work to make more, many more of the legislative districts competitive, just as you have in the congressional districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Victoria Steele, representing Self from Tucson, followed by Matthew Kopeck, and then Sam Almy, Molly Moore, and Sean Derns.
Hi, my name is Victoria Steele, S-T-E-E-L-E. I want to thank you for your time as well. I just am here to simply state my strong preference for competitive districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Kopeck, representing Self from Tucson.
My name is Matt Kopeck, K-O-P-E-C. I've lived in Tucson and Arizona my entire life. I believe that the people have the right to change the course of government when they feel it is on the wrong track. I think the draft congressional map achieves this goal, and I believe you've done a good job, and it should move forward, as is. I would like to say the same thing about the Legislative Draft Map. As it stands, both parties do not stand a chance of winning a majority in one or two of the houses of the legislature. As it stands, there are about three competitive districts, and I would encourage you to move it up to at least 10. The competitive districts in southern Arizona are to be applauded. I've moved from a one-party-dominated district to a competitive one, and I think this will be a big help to our delegation down here. I asked you that you, I asked that you expand what you've done in southern Arizona to the state as a whole. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Almy, representing Self from Tucson.
Hi, my name is Sam Almy, last name is A-L-M-Y, and I was asked to come here and mention that I have made a map, and I was one of the, I'm sorry about that, folks. I was asked to come here and mention that I have made a map, and I was one of the winners of the statewide competition for that. And I was able to come up with 10 competitive districts in my legislative map. As Matthew just said, this current legislative map has three competitive districts, and that is not where we need to be. We need to have more. The congressional map does do this. In Pima County, the legislative, there are competitive districts, but the rest of the state is very much lacking. I think that if the Democrats were to sweep all of their races and the competitive districts, they would not have a majority. That does not form an effective government. We need to have parties moving back and forth so that they are working in the interests of the people rather than the interests of their party. My quick suggestions for you guys, unfortunately, most of them are in Maricopa County, which I'm a little unfamiliar with, but I would suggest that you take the sort of airplane rudder from LD 24 and add it to the LD 23. That is sort of the northwest portion of that. LD 21, you can add more Republicans from that district to LD 29. And also, LD 30 could go more north into LD 20, and that would, there create six competitive districts. Unfortunately, I don't know where you'd move people around from there. I haven't spent the hours on your map. I spent 20, about 15 to 20 hours working on my map, and again, I was able to get 10 competitive districts. I am sure with your technology and the brains behind what's going on here, you will easily get this number as well. So I wish you luck, and please, more competitive districts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Molly Moore, representing Self from Tucson. And again, Sean Derns will be next, followed by Alex Mitch Jr. and Barbara M. Cain.
My name is Molly Moore, and I'm a longtime resident of Tucson. Moore, M-O-O-R-E. First, I'd like to compliment and congratulate the commission for all of its hard work, and particularly for the Chair Mathis for standing up and staying focused in spite of all of the political pressure coming on you. In 2002, the citizens voted to have this commission because we're tired of having our legislature determine by incumbency what our districts are. And as it now stands, it does not really reflect the true sentiments and feelings of the citizens of Arizona. So I would like to encourage you to be focused on the principle of competitiveness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Derns, representing Self from Tucson. Our next speaker is Sean Dirns, representing Self from Tucson.
My name is Sean Dirns, and I'm a Tucson native. That's D as in David, U-R-N-S. I would like to thank the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission for holding public meetings and for performing what must be, at times, a trying but nonetheless pivotal public service. As a native of this state, a Pima County resident, and a recent college graduate, I feel that it's absolutely important and imperative to have involvement from the community in politics and in public service. I think this can only be done through competitiveness. As such, I am completely satisfied within reason with the congressional districts. I think the Commission has done an excellent job in instilling competitiveness as far as the congressional map goes. However, I would like to see more competitiveness within the legislative map. I think that three districts just really isn't cutting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Mitch Jr., representing Self from Pima. After Alex will be Barbara M. Cain, Cecilia Cruz, Claudette Olson.
Hi, my name is Alex Mitch Jr. Last name is M-I-C-H. I want to thank you for your very difficult work. I just want to add my voice that the idea that competitiveness is an important factor, and salute you for what you have done to this, to this point, and to continue and make it as competitive as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara M. Cain, representing Self from Pima County.
I'm going to join everybody else saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you for your work." I'm sure you'll never volunteer again after this experience. But I'm not unhappy with congressional districts, although I personally wouldn't want to have District One. You'd be a lot of traveling there to meet your constituents. However, I have a bone to pick about the legislative districts. We're not happy with what's been happening in the state of Arizona. We need competition in the legislature here, and that's not going to happen. I've gone over these statistics that you've nicely given us, and there are only four or five districts where there's even a chance of having a competitive election. That's not going to make our state any better. You have it in your hands to make a difference, so that we won't be the lowest state in the nation when it comes to education, when it comes to other valuable things. We have a beautiful state, but it's not respected. I just got back from Michigan, and quite frankly, we're pretty much considered a laughing stock in some of the other states. And that's a heavy duty for you. But go back and look at those figures and readjust your lines, and give us at least 10 to 15 legislative districts that are competitive. We must have it to have a future for Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cecilia Cruz, representing Self from Tucson.
Hello, my name is Cecilia Cruz. I was born and have been raised in Arizona my entire life. I want to thank you for your hard work to all the commissioners who have volunteered their time to do this service for our, for our state. I've been a registered voter since the day I've registered at age 21. I've never, ever missed an election. I think it's a responsibility, and that's what makes our state great. I've heard the comments from people who want competitive districts. I think that especially north of Pima County, where we are here in Tucson, and in the southern part, you have done that, but again, further up the state, we need that to occur. My major concern with addressing you here today is that I'm very, wish that you continue to work with compliance with the Voter Rights Act, especially with respect to communities of interest, and not to dilute that minority voting power, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Claudette Olson, representing Self, and you'll have to tell us where you reside. After Claudette will be Shirley Munee, William Farrell, and Roger Salzgaber.
Hello, my name is Claudette Olson, O-L-S-O-N, and I reside at the eastern edge of Tucson. I want to thank the Commission so much for your work. I'm a recent resident of Arizona, and I am surprised and very pleased to see that you have an independent commission, and it's not, your, our districts are not determined by the legislatures, which, which can do it, redistrict to their own advantage. I am very happy with the congressional district map. I applaud you for that. I think the legislative districts need help. Competitiveness is the watchword. We have to make them more competitive. When, when people vote, they have to believe that their vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shirley Munee, representing Self from Tucson.
The last name is M-U-N-E-Y. Thank you. And like other people, I do appreciate all the work you've put in. I know you've had many long, long hours and a lot of miles that went into your work. I also want to speak about competitiveness. You've had speakers here who are incumbent representatives, elected in a majority party in their districts, and they have said that they want more competitive districts. With representation, voting representation about equal between Republicans, Democrats, and independents statewide, surely we can have more competitive districts than has been allotted so far, and I really urge you to rethink the way the districts are split up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Farrell, representing Self from Tucson.
I'm William Farrell from Tucson. I represent myself, and I'm impressed at the, you're attempting an impossible job, and I'm very grateful for you trying to do that. Mathematically, I think it's impossible to satisfy all the criteria. The criterion, though, that seems to me to be most important, in particular for the legislative districts, is the fact that the state is divided roughly one-third Republican, Democratic, and Independent. And one would expect that a state so divided would be one in which this, it was, elections would be competitive. So I think that the competitiveness is the most important factor here, and in the legislative districts, I think greater attention to that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roger Salzgaber, representing Self from Pima. He'll be followed by Faith Salzgaber, Sheri Bloudow, and Mary Gresham.
Good evening. My name is Roger Salzgaber, S-A-L-Z-G-E-B-E-R. And first of all, like everyone else, I'd like to thank you for your service and your dedication to implementing the voter pass proposition. After attending more than a few of these meetings and hearing much talk of communities of interest and competitiveness, I am struck by the fact that the largest community of interest I have heard are the voters who overwhelmingly supported the constitutional amendment that would create more fair and competitive districts. With regards to the current proposed congressional map, I believe that it is an important improvement over the current map. With the creation of two competitive districts along with the voting rights district, southern Arizona is headed in the right direction. I support the draft congressional map, but I would encourage you that if any changes should be made, those changes should increase, not decrease competitiveness. As far as the Arizona legislative map, I live in proposed LD-9, and I have seen, and I see an increase in competitiveness, which I support, but statewide, I am concerned that other LDs do not share in that competition. In conclusion, the majority of voters want to pick their legislators rather than the legislators picking their voters. Competitiveness, in my mind, is the name of the game. When candidates compete for votes, they should have to engage the whole community. Competition brings out the best in the business world, and it does so in politics, too. Every voter must feel that his or her vote counts on Election Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Faith Salzgaber, followed by Sheri Bloudow, Mary Gresham, and then Shirley Sodallards.
Good evening, and you're doing really well with our name. I first of all would like to thank the Commission members for all their hard work, often done in spite of outside pressures that continue to try to influence them. I particularly would like to thank Commissioners Freeman and McNulty, who, if I heard correctly, actually jointly developed the state legislative map. That was a huge undertaking. As far as the congressional map goes, initially, I did not favor three border districts, and I would rather have had four competitive districts instead of three. However, I believe that the draft congressional map, as it now stands, is a huge improvement and should go forward. The state legislative map, however, while a good start, really needs to be improved in terms of developing competitive districts. While the competitiveness has been improved in my district, in, excuse me, in the northwest Tucson area, there is still much work to be done overall with many of the districts in order to increase competition. That is what the voters wanted when they passed Proposition 106, and that's what clearly has been stated at so many of these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheri Bloudow, representing Self from Tucson.
Good evening, and I celebrate your work, because you are a result of what has happened when Arizona citizens get it right. They have gotten an independent commission, and now we can move forward. I agree with everyone that competitiveness is probably the most important aspect that you need to look at. I have been horrified to find that in our state legislature, that one party sits and makes all the decision excluding very specifically anybody else. That's not right. That's not representing the people of Arizona. And only through competitive districts will you give the people an opportunity to be able to have a voice, because right now, the voice that comes out in our state legislature is pretty much through one perspective. And so through these competitive districts, I think we can make it better. And wouldn't it be a grand time when we celebrate the 100th birthday of our state to truly become a state that allows all people to have an equal opportunity, to have their perspective heard? So I applaud you for what you've done. Congressional is looking good. It could be better. State really does need a little bit more competitiveness in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Yeah, if I, and I'll remind everyone, if you could spell your name for the court reporter. And if everyone could remember to spell your last name, that would, that'll be helpful. Our next speaker is Mary Gresham, representing Self from Pima.
Mary Gresham, G-R-E-S-H-A-M. I want to thank you for all the work that you've done, the long hours and miles on the road and listening to us. Thank you very much for that, and I would urge you to continue your work to keep as many competitive districts and make them as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheri, sorry, Shirley Sandelands, representing Self from Pima.
Thank you. I know it's a hard name.
I'm sorry.
My name is Shirley Sandelands, S-A-N-D-E-L-A-N-D-S, speaking as an individual. I want to thank the Chair and the Commission for all of their work that you have been doing. I was here two weeks ago when you went through, had your consultant go through all of the categories and explain every legislative district. I, too, would like to see as much competition as possible, but I do know that we have to follow the Voter Act, and we, you have to consider many things. So thank you for all of your work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Irvin Lee Tucker, representing Self from Panal, followed by Jim March, Charles Evans, and Brooke Francisco.
In your first meeting at Oral Valley, at which I was at, and several others, there was a strong request to be sure to have Saddlebrook and Oral Valley stay together, and you have done that, of course, in the LD-8 that is planned, and we want to thank you for that. Saddlebrook, of course, I'm representing a community that is, the first that is out of Pima here tonight. We're in Greater Tucson, but we're just over the line into Panal. We're an unusual community, because we're not a town. We are over 9,100 population, 9,100 people, and we represent two homeowners' associations. So our real concern is that the congressional district we put in, not only will we possibly quite strongly have our representative over 400 miles away in an area that Panal is larger than any one of three other states, and actually LD, or congressional District One is much larger than that. We have no common interest to the North. As a adult community, we're actually a community under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. All our people are either 55 or older, except there are some exceptions to that. We would deeply ask you to look at the criteria that are in the Constitution. We are clearly not in a good situation with congressional District One, and we certainly see ourselves as a part of Greater Tucson and not a rural community. So placing it, placing us in LD one, congressional District One, and keep changing that, please look at that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim March, Second Vice Chair for Pima County Libertarians.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I know a thing or two about being bullied. Personally, growing up, I'm a mild Asperger's case, which means bullying, being bullied pretty much goes along with the territory in school. As a political activist, I know where my head's at. I don't like bullies. I didn't like the kind of sheriffs that would sell gun permits for campaign contributions in California. I didn't like the kind of people who would rig electronic voting machines across the entire US, hell, across the world. And I don't like the kind of bullies that are picking on you guys right about now. They clearly are. It never helps anybody to cave into a bully, and legally speaking, you don't have to. You're supposed to be an independent commission. You've done an independent job of carving up this state like a big Christmas turkey is, which you're supposed to do every 10 years. From a purely libertarian point of view, a completely race-neutral set of boundaries would be the preferred alternative, but given past misconduct, past racism in this state, that's off the table. That's not going to happen because of DOJ preclearance. Given the limits the DOJ places on you for these reasons, you've done about the best job you probably could have done. There's people asking for yet more competitiveness, but again, carving up the racial lines has probably hosed that some. What I'm here to ask you to do is to hold tough. What I'm here to ask you to do is to hold tough, okay? Stand up to the people who are saying something, I don't even know precisely what argument they can make. You've got a tough job to do. You've done it. You can't be sued for doing your jobs, and you haven't acted in a corrupt fashion. You've got nothing to worry about. Stand up to them. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Charles Evans, representing Self from Panal County. After Charles is Brooke Francisco, Sharice Stephens, and Damian.
Thank you. My name is Charles Evans, and I'm a resident of Saddle Brook, Arizona. It's my belief that Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, and Morana should be placed back into CD2. As it stands, our small pocket of population finds themselves in CD1, which is in fact larger than several contiguous northeastern states. I receive my newspaper from Tucson. I receive my television from Tucson. I shop in Tucson. I should be able to select my representative to Washington who has the same area interests as I do. As it stands, I believe the districts have now disenfranchised me. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brooke Francisco, representing PALF, UFCW, from Tucson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brooke Francisco. That's F-R-A-N-C-I-S-C-O. As a resident of Tucson and a student here at the U of A in the Department of Political Science, I recognize the need for competitive districts here in southern Arizona. Without competitive districts, elections are predictable among party lines, and independent voters are often left out. Last year, only 41% of registered voters turned out in the election, and this is due to the fact that they felt underrepresented and that their vote did not matter. Competition is at the heart of democracy, and if we do not implement competitive districts, it's going to continue to lead to party extremism among Democrats and Republicans. More seriously, the number of voters who turn out in elections will continue to dwindle. More people, excuse me, the answer to the questions presented to us here today is the need for competition among districts in southern Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharice Stephens, representing Northwest Conservatives from Pima.
Good evening. My name is Sharice Stephens, and that's S-T-E-F-F-E-N-S. I live in northern Pima County and am here today to represent the Northwest Conservatives Group. Our group is very concerned that the redistricting commission has lost sight of what the voters wanted when we passed Proposition 106. In regards to southern Arizona, neither the CD nor the LD maps make any sense at all. There are 13 rural counties in Arizona. No rural county should be joined with any part of metro Phoenix or Tucson. According to the 2010 census, Arizona has enough people in the rural parts of the state to deserve at least two completely rural districts, one in eastern Arizona and the other in western Arizona. The CD1 draft map places rural counties like Coconino, Navajo, and Apache with the suburban communities of Morana, Oral Valley, Saddle Brook, and unincorporated west Pima County, northwest Pima County, all of which are northern suburbs connected directly to the city of Tucson. These areas do not have anything in common with central and northern Arizona. We don't even share the same TV news stations. Additionally, the Navajo and Apache nations do not share the same visions, issues, and concerns that we do. They are a sovereign nation with their own very specific needs and goals. Morana, Oral Valley, Saddle Brook, and unincorporated northwest Pima County, which includes Abra Valley, Picture Rocks, Casas Adobes, and Tortalita areas, belong in southern Arizona and should be moved into Congressional District Two. Legislative Districts 11 and 8 are so large that they inhibit the citizens of both political parties from gathering together and electing a representative who can fairly represent the residents. Attending LD meetings will not be possible for many residents because of time restraints and transportation costs. Those living in the southern end of the LD, like Morana and northwest Pima County, or Maricopa at the far north end, will be much less likely to have the opportunity to participate in choosing their representatives than those living in the middle. Attending LD meetings will be difficult for everybody. The same goes for Morana, Oral Valley, Saddle Brook, Florence, Coolidge, and the Santan Valley. These areas cannot be fairly represented by the same elected officials. It is over an hour's drive from northern to southern boundaries. So why not put Morana, Oral Valley, Saddle Brook, and unincorporated northwest Pima County, which includes Abra Valley, Picture Rocks, Casas Adobes, and Tortalita in the same LD? There are only 30 minutes from end to end in all directions. These areas share the same roads, schools, doctors and hospitals, grocery stores and libraries. Also, Suntran, the public transportation system, connects all of these communities together. They are bordered by the Silver Bell Mountains on the west and the Catalinas on the east and River Road on the south. We would use geographical features and have compactness, communities of interest, competitiveness, and diversity. Both the congressional district draft map and legislative draft map do not comply with the Arizona Constitution in many ways. Many of the districts, especially in southern Arizona, are not compact. The CD districts do not separate rural communities of interest from suburban areas which have totally different needs. Geographical features, as well as city, town, and county boundaries, were not used whenever possible. The Arizona Constitution states that "to the extent practicable, the district line shall use visible geographical features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts." Southern Arizonans should elect our representatives from southern Arizona, not from central or northern Arizona. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Damian Klinko, representing Self from Tucson, followed by Damian will be Keith Bagwell, Leann Anderson, and Joyce Friedery.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the time to address you. I'll be very brief. I think it's important that we do have more competitive districts. It's important that we have more competitive districts, but additionally, I have a concern about the boundaries of proposed LD 2 and 3 in downtown Tucson. The proposed boundaries exclude two neighborhoods that are part of downtown Tucson, Santa Rita Park and Barrio Santa Rosa. There are two ways to remedy this. Either move the boundary to the line of the city of South Tucson at 25th and a Half, or move the boundary north to Congress Street. So I'd recommend you look at both of those, but to exclude those neighborhoods from downtown really doesn't respect communities of interest. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last name is Klinko, C-L-I-N-C-O, and the two neighborhoods are Santa Rita Park and Barrio Santa Rosa. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Bagwell, representing Self from Tucson.
My name is Keith Bagwell, B-A-G-D-E-L-L. I'm here, as I have been in the past, in support of the map that was created earlier by the Hispanic Coalition for Good Government. To that end, I would like to suggest a little tweaking on the congressional map as it relates to District, what is it, Congressional District 3. I'd like to see you add one precinct to the east of this, all the way from Grant Road down to Interstate 10. And that would be precincts 73, 78, 63, 82, 85, and 66. And the reason for this is that these are all, there are a lot of communities of interest. The northern precincts there are, represent historic neighborhoods like the one I live in, Armory Park. These, they're near the university, they're racially diverse, there are age diversity. They have a lot in common. They meet together once a month with the university, and so they have a lot in common. There's a high union density in union halls in these areas. And then when you get down to the south, we're talking about precincts that have very high minority populations, have a lot in common with the precincts to their west. So I think you would do everybody a service by tweaking this a bit and adding one precinct to the east, all the way from Grant Road to I-10 on Congressional District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leann Anderson, representing CCSR from Pima.
Leann Anderson, L-E-I-A-N-N, last name S-O-N, Anderson. I ask that you keep Green Valley and Saurita together. We are a family of shared lives. Our goals and aspirations dovetail in myriad areas. We are a community of interest. I also support two rural districts in southern Arizona. Please give southern Arizona what we have asked for over the last four months. There have been hours of testimony given. Phone calls, faxes, emails have all been sent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joyce Friedery. You can correct me when you come up, representing Self from Oral Valley. Following Joyce will be Peyton Davies, Alex Bissett, and Garland Cox.
My name is Joyce Friedericy from Oral Valley. That's F-R-I-E-D-E-R-I-C-Y. Congressional District 1, shown on the current map, is a perfect example of a gerrymandered district. It does not keep communities of interest together or keep from splitting counties. Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, and Morana need to be joined into CD2, which would make both CD1 and CD2 more compact. These communities are not close to northern Arizona and have nothing in common with them and would not be well-served by one representative.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peyton Davies, representing Self from Oral Valley.
My name is Peyton Davies, D-A-V-I-E-S. I'm from Oral Valley. Those of us from Oral Valley, Saddle Brook, and Morana have asked to be kept together. So with what I feel has been malice, you have done that. But you have put us in northern Arizona, where we will have very little influence, and if we even want to go to a district meeting, it will take two days. Some of us are not able to be away at night. The proposed CD1 is a travesty. You should put us into CD2. Give southern Arizona what we have been asking for for the last four months. We have been ignored. Southern Arizona does not belong in the same congressional district as northern Arizona. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Bissett, representing Sun City, Vostoso, residents in Oral Valley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Congressional District 1, I agree, as shown on the current map, takes up about half of the area of the state of Arizona, and it does set a perfect example of a gerrymandered district. I believe this, that we have this tiny little area here of Oral Valley, Morana, and Saddle Brook, has been dropped into this huge District 1 as a result of many of us complaining about some of the improprieties on the part of the chairman here. It does not keep communities of interest together or keep from splitting counties. Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, and Morana need to be joined into CD2, which would make both CD1 and CD2 more compact and preserve communities of interest in CD2. These communities are not close to northern Arizona and have nothing in common with them and cannot be served well by one representative. We feel we wouldn't have a representative. The travel of CD1 district would take a representative a couple of days at least, but CD2 district with Saddle Brook, Oral Valley, and Morana could be done in one day with events in each part of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you spell your name, please, sir? Mr. Bissett? Can you please spell your name? Thank you.
I forgot my name. Alex Bissett, last name B-I-S-S-E-T-T, from Oral Valley.
Marty, are you good? All right, we'll keep going. Our next speaker is Garland Cox, representing Self from Pima.
I'm Garland Cox, C-O-X. I am addressing the point that the counsel for the commission have become surrogates for the Department of Justice, and they have not given sound legal advice to their clients, the AIRC. Due to their malpractice, they have violated the civil rights of millions of Arizonans. I suspect that the dynamic between Mary O'Grady and Joe Keenfield is very important to the way this process has unfolded. Mary was Joe's boss at the Attorney General's office. These two attorneys are supposed to advise the commission about the law, the actual law as written, not interpreted by attorneys at the DOJ Civil Rights Division. However, from the outset, both attorneys, representing the two sides, have consistently bought into the DOJ idea that Hispanics as a minority are protected by regression analysis. This is not, this is not correct. Regression analysis only applies to racial minorities. Hispanic is not a race in either DOJ guidelines or in the census. Hispanics are members of an ethnic group and may be members of a language minority under the Voting Rights Act if they are eligible to vote and have limited proficiency with English, such that it affects their ability to vote and elect a candidate of their choice. That is exactly what the Voting Rights Act, the DOJ Civil Rights Guidelines, and the AG Guidelines say. This idea that the voting strength of Hispanics must be protected as if they were a minority race is a creation of some imaginative lawyers at the DOJ and the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund. Hispanics are potentially members of a language minority, but only if they are eligible to vote and have limited English proficiency. That is why only 2.65% of Arizona's total population should be considered as both Hispanic and members of a language minority for Voting Rights Act purposes. The only special consideration for members of a language minority is that election and registration materials be available in a language they understand and oral assistance provided for language minorities that do not have a written language. The commission will argue that they have been following Arizona constitutional guidelines and goals by attempting to comply with the Voting Rights Act at the outset and designing two congressional districts and nine legislative districts where election of a Hispanic is assured. This redistricting process has been guided by an attempt to establish proportional representation for Hispanics, that is, 29.8%. This is a position of the DOJ and the advice given by O'Grady and Keenfield. However, that is legally unfounded and is contrary to the holdings of several decisions by the U.S. Supreme Court, but most specifically the holdings in Shaw versus Reno, 509 U.S. 630, 1993. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you. (applause). Thank you. (applause). Thank you. Our next speaker is Dustin Cox, representing Self from Pima. After Dustin will be Barbara Tellman, Tom McConnell, and Lucy Messing.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to start off by just saying thank you, again, for traveling the state and spending so much of your time, you know, working hard on creating these maps. And I, I'm going to talk mostly on the legislative districts map. I think you did fairly well on, on the congressional districts map as far as competitiveness goes. But I'm, I'm a little disappointed on the legislative maps. We only have about three out of 30 districts that are competitive. And when Arizona is split into roughly thirds, Republican, Democratic, and Independent, I don't think that is reflective of our population. So I'm going to tell a little bit of a story because that's kind of how I think that, and I think how people understand. And in honor of our upcoming holiday, Halloween, I'm going to tell you a little story about that. On Halloween, I would go trick-or-treating with my brother and we would, we would get our candy and our parents would split it up, you know, equally among us. And then he would steal it from me. And I would cry foul, of course, because that was my candy. And he'd give me, you know, maybe one out of 10 pieces of candy that was mine just to shut me up. And that kind of kept me quiet. I think that is what is happening in this case because we're getting just a few competitive districts when we deserve more. And while my brother got all of his candy and most of mine, it kept me quiet. And now, I, I, he's a little fatter than I am now. But he got what he wanted. And that's kind of what, what I'm trying to, to describe in a poorly worded story, is we deserve more as Arizonans. We deserve more competitive districts. And while this map is better than what we have right now, there is more work to be done because we, we need competitive districts so that we can have the ability to change the status quo. So please consider that as you go in and tweak the districts to try and make some more competitiveness. I think at least 10 would be reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Tellman, representing Self from Tucson.
Barbara Tellman, that's T.E.L.L.M.A.N. Like everyone else, I want to thank all of you, the commissioners and the staff, for your hard work and dedication. And I think you've come up with some really good products in a lot of ways. I'm only going to comment on the southern Arizona portion of the legislative district map. It has a lot of really good features, but it falls short in several respects. I think the division of Pima County into eight LDs right now is excessively splitting of Pima County. We currently have six LDs. And what you have proposed is three LDs entirely within Pima County, two with a sizable number of voters in Pima County but shared with other, two other counties, and three having only a small number of Pima County voters and are shared with two to three other counties. This is bad for two reasons. This is a time when almost every county in Arizona has had to cut its budget for its elections department and it's cut to staff. They're having difficulty finding expertise. And increasing the complexity of, you know, the number of ballots that have to be produced and the computer programming is very difficult at this time of financial hardship. In addition, dividing a county such as Pima into so many separate districts makes it very difficult for a county party of either party to organize. In rural counties, you can avoid this. In Pima County, you could have minimized it. We now will face a situation as we now have with Legislative District 25, where no one county has enough voters in, to make the district able, ability to organize. We will now have three such problem areas in Pima County, and I think this is a problem for both parties. Even the Green Valley-Sarita area has been split by this map. Competitiveness has been talked about with a number of people. I'd like to give you two specific ways in which I think you could increase competitiveness in this area. Cochise County has been divided into the Republican North and the Democratic South, both of which are shared with Pima County. If you were to move the Democratic section into Cochise County so that it's one entire county, you would still have a minority, a majority-minority district with the remaining Democrats and, meaning voters in District 2. It would go from 62 percent Hispanic to approximately 52 percent, and that is plenty in order to assure a voting for Hispanic representative. The other one is District 3. It's far too safe for Democrats. That's where I lived for a long time. A Republican might not even bother to run in that district. It can be made more competitive by moving the northern boundary to the Penal County line west of the freeway and moving the non-Hispanic Democratic areas east of the freeway to increase competitiveness in an adjacent district to the north. This would reduce the Democratic majority, margin there from a sure thing to a district that is competitive. I urge you to consider this and put competitiveness and county lines more in balance with the other criteria. I was able to draw a map that did this with using MapTitude, and I'm sure that your experts can do an even better job. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom McConnell, representing Self from Tucson.
Thank you for your service. I, I wanted to comment that I've done some analysis of your response to the Voting Rights Act requirements. The Native American district seems absolutely fine, and it's inevitable anyway. The, the Hispanic districts, I believe, contain far more Hispanics than are actually needed to accomplish the VRA requirement. The Section 5 requirement is that they be able to elect a candidate of choice. When I analyzed four of the current legislative districts that cover much of your majority-minority region, I find that 43 percent was the, the maximum amount that was needed to ensure electability since all of these were heavily Democratic, "safe" districts, "safe" in quotes. But the, the result was that the primary determined the result of the election in almost every case where more than 43 percent were Hispanic voting age population. Therefore, I think you have some flexibility in that, in those majority districts that could be used to create more competitive districts. I did a map that showed the ability to create as many as 13 competitive districts, given that sort of shift in the minority area. The other comment, and this is strictly applying to the LD map at this point, I can live with this CD map even though it puts me in world's largest congressional district, but that's a great experiment. We'll see how it works out. The, the other point is that you have spared the scalpel only with respect to two counties in the LD map. Every county has been carved up to some degree with the exception of La Paz and Apache. I think that county lines should be given much higher priority. As Ms. Tellman just indicated, there are huge budget issues in administering this. It is currently not well-administered in counties, particularly in the rural counties, and this adds a burden just as they are asked to reduce budgets. I believe you can maintain county lines with a great deal more success than you've had so far. Thank you. And I have a copy of the analysis of the...
Please, yes. Corinne will take it. Our next speaker is Lucy Messing from Pima.
My name is Lucy Messing, M.E.S.S.I.N.G. I'm the immediate past president of the Tucson Education Association and an active member of the Arizona Education Association, retired. Like many others who have come to speak before you, I urge you to seek competitive districts. In an ideal situation, we would have 30 competitive legislative districts, while that probably is not possible. Therefore, we should probably have equal number of, of districts competitive with the political parties, 10 Republican, 10 Democrat, 10 competitive. Then no one would have any reason to complain. And we would be able to tell our students that your vote does count because that is what we try to teach them, the importance of going to the polls and exercising their right to vote and have a say in the political process. My concern is that while yours is an impossible task, it's important for you to be independent. That is what the voters wanted when they voted in, in Prop 106. And please don't allow some of the, the issues that are occurring with the committee that was, is being formed by the Republican legislature to interfere in the process. Voters specifically did not want this left up into the hands of the legislatures. And so therefore, it is incumbent upon you to be as independent as possible and do the job that you are doing. Specifically with the, the CD districts, we are going to attain another one, so there'll be nine. So again, I would say to you, then there should be three, three, and three, so that individuals won't have a complaint. It will be fair and it will be serving the intent of the voters. And as always, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Thank you.
Thank you. Court reporter check. Okay, we'll keep going. Our next speaker is Magdalena Barajas, representing Hispanic Coalition for Good Government. After Magdalena is Doris Klatanoff, Rita Jelszeth, and Carolyn Cox.
Good evening. My name is Magdalena Barajas, M.A.G., oops, sure. My name is Magdalena Barajas, M.A.G.D.A.L.E.N.A. Last name is Biazem Bravo, A.R.A.J.A.S. Here representing the Hispanic Coalition for Good Government. Of course, I want to thank you for listening and making adjustments based on the public's input and testimony. The Hispanic Coalition stands by the maps that we originally presented to the, to the commission. However, we do recognize that those won't replace the work that you've done. We commend you for your efforts. We thank you for your consideration. That being said, the Coalition is asking for a minor adjustment that we will believe has a significant impact to several neighborhoods. Pueblo Gardens, Las Vista's, and Western Hills neighborhoods, which are essentially bound by the, on the, to the north by 22nd Street, to the south by I-10, to the east just about Aviation Highway Parkway, excuse me, and Campbell and Kino Parkway to the west. They are like communities surrounding this area, and we'd like to see them be included and incorporated into the congressional district 3, the proposed congressional district 3. I'll give an example. These neighborhoods were very key in working on the Bridges Project, so that's along the Kino Parkway. These neighborhoods have done work together for decades and have been represented by the same representative, been in the same district for, for a very long time, and even are in the same ward for the city of Tucson. We, so again, we ask that you incorporate these neighborhoods into the proposed CD 3, and we believe that you have some options for making adjustments in other areas of the district. The Coalition will be meeting very soon, and should this minor adjustment be accomplished, we will consider withdrawing any objection to the maps and help support you in moving forward with the Department of Justice clearance, pre-clearance process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doris Klatanoff, representing Self from Saddle Brook, followed by Rita Jelszeth and Carolyn Cox.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. My name is Doris Klatanoff, spelled C.L.A.T.A.N.O.F.F., and I live in Saddle Brook in Penal County. I wish to address this evening the layout for Congressional District 1. As projected, this district covers all or part of seven Arizona counties, if my count is correct, and it borders two states at least, maybe even three. I went on a map quest to check out this district and found out it's over 531 miles from Douglas, Arizona, way up to Page, and it takes nine hours and nine minutes to make the trip. And by gosh, you guys can identify with what a big district this would be, and I would pity anybody who would try to represent Congress in such a vast district. This actually, as it's laid out in my judgment, and I thought this wasn't original, but it's not, it is a travesty. How are any people in this area to be fairly represented? You look at that, and you have northern Arizona up there, and that's in the National Forest Area. You have this great big rural area out here that's completely separate from northern Arizona and southern Arizona. And here we are in the southern, in the Sonoran Desert, and we're all packed together into one congressional district. There is absolutely no way that one human being could fairly represent all of us. It's just utterly impossible. I don't care whether they're independent, Democrat, or Republican. I'm all for competition there, but I don't see competition here because I just don't see how one person could travel around and/or represent this particular district. Saddle Brook needs to be linked with the urban area and rural areas near it where it has a community of interest and continuity. The rural area could be banned together because they have a lot in common. Northern Arizona can be incorporated into a congressional district up there. I want to thank you for your attention to these concerns because I know that you can do better than this for the people who reside in this proposed district. Every Arizona citizen deserves to have a fair chance to be represented in Congress, and frankly, the way this is set up, I don't see it reflected. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rita Jelszeth, representing Self from Oro Valley.
Rita Jelszeth, F.J.E.L.S.E.T.H. And I am from Oro Valley. Congressional District 1, shown on the current map, is the perfect example of a gerrymandered district. It is not competitive or compact. As the lady before me just said, it takes nine hours to drive from one end to another. It does not keep communities of interest together or keep from splitting counties. Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana need to be joined into CD 2, which would make both CD 1 and CD 2 more compact. These communities are not close to Arizona and have nothing in common with them and could be, and could not be well-served by one representative, not at all, unless he had a helicopter. To travel to C, the CD 1 district would take a representative at least two days, but the CD district with Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana, it could be done in one day with events in each part of the district. I thank you for your consideration in changing this outrageous line. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Cox, representing Pima Republican Party.
My name is Carolyn Cox. I have a resolution of the Pima County Republican Party, Pima County, State of Arizona, strongly condemning the actions of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. Whereas the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission has knowingly violated its responsibilities for redistricting under federal and Arizona law, including but not limited to the 14th and 15th Amendments to the United States Constitution, the Voting Rights Act, 42 U.S.C.A. 1973, and Article 4 of the Arizona Constitution. And whereas the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission has failed to demonstrate a sincere commitment to performing its responsibilities in an, in an honest, independent, and impartial fashion, and to upholding public confidence in the integrity of the redistricting process. And whereas the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission has knowingly violated its responsibilities for conducting open meetings to the public under Arizona law, including but not limited to Title 38 of the Arizona Revised Statutes. And whereas the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission has knowingly violated its procurement responsibilities to the public under Arizona law, including but not limited to Title 41 of the Arizona Revised Statutes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Pima County Republican Party, Pima County, State of Arizona, strongly condemn the partisan and unlawful actions of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission and recommends the following, that Governor Jan Brewer, State of Arizona, remove the five members of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission in accord... in accordance with Article Four of the Arizona Constitution; that Attorney General Tom Horn, State of Arizona, aggressively continue his criminal investigation and civil litigation against the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission; that the majority leadership of the Senate and House of Representatives, State of Arizona, make written redistricting recommendations to the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission in accordance with Article Four of the Arizona Constitution that are in the best interests of the State of Arizona and all Arizona citizens, not the Commission's favored special interest groups. These recommendations should eliminate the wholesale gerrymandering of Arizona and protect the voters' constitutional and democratic rights guaranteed under both the Equal Treatment Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and the Voting Rights Act.
Are you good still? Okay. Our next speaker is Margaret Knowles, representing Self from Tucson, and then Raquel Cook from Oro Valley, followed by James Cook from Oro Valley.
Thank you for your patience. I'm a little slow. Anyway, I'm Margaret Knowles, K-N-O-W-L-E-S, and I live in the community of Saddle Brook in Pinal County. And Chairman Mathis and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to share my opinion. I think the legislative district map is well-drawn and should stand. However, I'm very concerned about the congressional district map, in particular, CD One. It is so far-flung that it totally ignores communities of interest. As you've heard from others, Saddle Brook is linked with rural communities hundreds of miles away, and there is no way this could possibly comply with the criteria to be compact. So bottom line, please include Saddle Brook with Oro Valley and Morana, our neighbors to the south, and CD Two. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Raquel Cook, representing Self from Oro Valley.
Raquel Cook, C-O-O-K. When I first saw the lines that were drawn for CD One, I thought there must be some huge mistake. This is almost funny if it were not so serious. I regret to say that congressional district number one appears to me to be an egregious example of gerrymandering. Covering nearly half the state of Arizona as currently drawn, it is not competitive and certainly not compact. It does not keep communities of interest together or prevent the splitting up of counties. Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana should be placed into CD Two, which would make both districts more compact. These communities are geographically distant from those in northern Arizona, having nothing in common, and could not be well-served by one representative. It would take a representative two days at least to travel congressional district one as currently drawn. But with Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Morana included in CD Two, it could be done in one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Cook from Oro Valley. After James will be Maria Apodaca and Adela Lara Lubbers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and the Commissioner's staff. Once again, not to get redundant—you've been hearing this from all of us people out in Oro Valley—but the CD One is just not workable, and I guess it's contiguous, but it's not compact. And I feel that the voters would really be disenfranchised to have a district this large, and I really encourage your commission to break that up somehow, so put us in CD Two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Apodaca, representing Self from Tucson.
Good evening. My name is Maria Apodaca, A-P-O-D-A-C-A. I have a question before I get started. This is the legal counsel. I just wanted to ask a question. It says here, what are the requirements of the state constitution via Prop 106? Is this an order of importance, the way it's written? You know, with—you know what I'm talking about? Okay, well, it says, what are the requirements of the state constitution via Prop 106? It was in the handout.
That's the order that appears in the constitution.
Okay, so the reason I asked that—if it's put, worded in the order of importance—I see competitive districts as the last, and the way the map—the CD map—is drawn, the communities of interest, it's not there. So I want to let you know that when I purchased my house, I did not go in thinking, what is the most competitive district I can live in? I went with communities of interest, and what the map does is break that up. So I just wanted to make that point about that. I have to put my glasses on to read my statement now, but I just wanted to clarify that. The Commission should draw at least two districts completely outside Metro Phoenix and Metro Tucson, one in eastern Arizona and one in western Arizona. If Coconino County must be included in a district with a heavily populated area, it should be kept completely out of Maricopa County and Pima County. No rural county should be joined with any part of Metro Phoenix or Metro Tucson except when necessary to comply with the Voting Rights Act. The new CD One places Coconino County with the suburban communities of Mara, Morana, Oro Valley, and Saddle Brook just north of Tucson. Do not put Pima County communities of Morana and Oro Valley in with the eastern rural district that includes Coconino County. The rural counties should be able to elect a candidate from rural Arizona, not from suburban Tucson. If two rural districts and three border districts are truly desired by the Commission, this can be accomplished without putting the eastern counties in with Pima County and without putting the western counties in with the urban areas of Maricopa County and Pinal County. Arizona has more than enough people in the rural parts of our state to deserve a minimum of two completely rural districts. The northern parts of Pinal County that are currently drawn in CD Four, such as Florence, Gold Canyon, Queen Valley, and the San Tan Valley, should be currently drawn in CD One, and non-reservation part of Coconino County currently drawn into CD One. This would be a very easy swap that would create two rural counties and not make the Commission have to completely redraw the map. It would be an easy fix. Thank you.
Thank you. It's 8:05 PM, and we've got about 42 more request-to-speak forms. More got added from the very beginning, so we'll take maybe a 10-minute break and be back shortly. The time is now 8:05. Okay, we'll end recess now. The time is 8:23 PM, and we're in the midst of public comment. Our next speaker—next three speakers—Adela Lara Lubbers, excuse me, former State Representative Tom Prozelski, and Marianna Spear.
My name is Adela Lara Lubbers, L-A-R-A-L-U-B-B-E-R-S. I just want to say thank you to the Committee for the time and commitment that you've put into this, and I know that you are away from your families, and so I greatly appreciate the time that you are putting in. My issue will be short, and it's just about the congressional district. I just would like for you to consider putting Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, Morana, Cochise County, Graham, and Greenland into CD Two. The Relito River should be the northern line, Alvernon, the east Tucson dividing line. We share communities, school boards, and interest. I feel that the Committee can go back to the drawing board and come up with something that will be favorable to everyone in the CD One, as it is now wanting to be passed. So any efforts to make this a more comparable, conditional district for the people who live in this community would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is former State Representative Tom Prozelski from Tucson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted—first, before I go into my comments, I just wanted to address the issue about CD One. The truth is, is that northern Arizona has always been very problematic in terms of drawing congressional districts. Currently, the district extends down to Casa Grande and Graham County. It's currently an unwieldy and large district, and it looks like there's very little way to fix that, given the sparse population of the rest of the state. I'd just like to remind some of the people who came up to speak that these districts in rural Arizona have always been very large, have always been districts that cannot be traversed easily within a day. In the 1960s, Arizona had two congressional districts. One was Maricopa County, then the other was the rest of the state, and I'm sure that there were similar complaints then. It's just a problem of our geography and demographics, and I don't think there's really a good way to resolve that at this point. My second point is about the maps we have available right now. Speaking as a resident of Barrio Viejo, first, I think it's very strange that I am currently in a—under the maps you're working with now, I'm in a legislative district that includes Bisbee and Douglas. This looks like an effort to pack all the Mexican-Americans in one district. It doesn't make much sense, and I hope you revisit that. Also, there's a problem with some neighborhoods, particularly Las Vistas and Pueblo Gardens neighborhood. Those are currently marginally African-American neighborhoods, but they have a long history with the Mexican-American community in that area. They've always been in the same district as the adjacent Mexican-American areas, whether it's Congressman Udall's district or the old District 10. They've always shared that history. When I was on the Cities Redistricting Commission, we got the city—in 2001—we got the city to create an ArcView layer of all the organized neighborhood associations in Tucson, and we used that to make sure we didn't divide any established organized neighborhood associations. The current map does divide some of those organized neighborhood associations, and I would urge you to try to get that data and make sure that those neighborhoods on the south side in particular are kept whole.
Thank you. Yes, please spell. Thank you.
P-R-E-Z-E-L-S-K-I.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marianna Spear, representing Self from Tucson.
Good evening. My name is Marianna Spear, S-P-I-E-R. Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you for your service. I am a United States citizen by choice. I strongly believe in democracy and the democratic political process. I follow politics and elections very closely. To my surprise, last November in 2010, only 55.6% of the registered voters in Arizona Probably—as a matter of fact, I'm sure—a much lesser number voted down the ballot to elect their senator or representative in the Arizona legislative district. I wonder myself why. For me, there is only one obvious answer to this lack of civic interest and involvement. People feel that their votes don't count. This is not good, not good for anybody, not good for Arizona, not good for democracy. I don't think this is the American way. You have the opportunity to restore the democratic process in Arizona by creating as many fair and competitive districts as possible. I have a couple of suggestions regarding the community of interest from that point of view. I didn't hear anybody here representing Rita Ranch. I don't live there, but I know the area. I suggest you consider keeping the community of Rita Ranch together, either in District One or Two—I'm not sure how the numbers will play—and probably shifting some population from District Two to One along the border will solve some of the problems, and keep also Cochise County as a whole. Thank you for your service again.
Thank you. Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Can you spell your name, please? Oh, Rita Ranch. Okay. Our next speaker is Bob Bro, representing Self from Tucson. After Bob is Frank Bergen, followed by Ben Love and Sammy Hamed.
I got one for you. Bob Bro, last name is B-R-E-A-U-L-T. That's a good French name. I'm representing myself. I'm a businessman in the optics industry. Chairman Mathis and Commissioners, thank you very much for the dedication and vast amount of time you have put in. For the judicial record, I support what you have conceived for the congressional districts, especially the third district in Tucson and the three border districts. I trust in what you have done, and therefore, I trust in what you may have to do to accommodate all these conversations. I believe it will be good for the economy. I go to Washington about eight times a year, interfaced with vast number of people who represent me in District Two. And you just saw Adam Smith from Oregon, Boxer from California, Dominique Binghamman from New Mexico, Colorado, Florida, Geppard, Gingrich, Dole, Pat Cho, running mate, Murphy in Pennsylvania, and Kennedy. So this district stuff that they're talking about in District One—that whoever you assign it to, somebody's going to say it's too big, and to meet all the requirements of A and B, that it's going to be big. So the way you have done the districts, I believe it will be good for the economy. It will be competitive. It shows fairness and balance, and as Proposition 106 is required for. I want more competitiveness in the legislative districts. We are politically split in a third, so if you can find some more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Bergen, representing Self from Tucson.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Frank Bergen, and it's B-E-R-G-E-N, and I'm here once again. But tonight, I'd like to begin by reminding everyone who's here that we began the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, which ends with a reference to this country as being one in which there is liberty and justice for all. When the voting rights— When the Voting Rights Act was passed in 1965, there were reasons for it, and the reasons had to do with the lack of justice for all. Those reasons have, to a very great extent, been lessened. But apparently, this state has not yet got itself together enough to come out from under the aegis of the Voting Rights Act. That act is the law of the land. We have to comply with it in order to go ahead with new districts in which, hopefully, we can vote as our minds and our consciences urge us. Were there never a need for a Voting Rights Act, I am convinced that in the year 2000, the state voters would still have found that the legislature was not doing a terribly good job of fairly and competitively drawing district lines, and would still have passed Proposition 106, which calls specifically, in its very preamble, for fair and competitive districts. All the other stuff is really, in the long run, subordinate to fair and competitive districts. And I'm going to end right there, but with this one last word, two last words. One is, I'm thankful that up to the present point, I find myself in a congressional district which is probably a tad more competitive than the one that I have been in for the past 10 years, and in a legislative district in which I can hope, at some point in the next 10 years, to elect one, two, or three people who will represent me better than those have in the last 10 years. The other thing is, I don't think that any of the Commissioners, except for Commissioner Sturts, may be aware that when I'm dressed up on Sunday, it's with a collar on, and I would be happy, if necessary, to pay chaplain visits to you when you're sent to jail for the excellent job that you are doing. Thank you, and God bless.
Thanks. I think. Our next speaker is Ben Love, representing Oral Valley Democrats from Oral Valley.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Ben L-O-V-E is my last name. And I'm here because I've heard so much about competitiveness. I am a Democrat in Sun City. I don't have a proposition or a resolution to threaten you with. I'm not like Terry Proud and Williams and Melvin, who threatened you, but it apparently worked because you got Oral Valley with Saddle Brook, and we love our Saddle Brook people. We just don't have to vote with them, and they say they have to come to Oral Valley to get their golf carts serviced. Well, they will still vote in the same place they are right now, in Saddle Brook, so I don't believe that that's a valid thing. This Oral Valley has been cast out of Pima County by these people who have threatened you, and I'm sorry that that happened. I just hate to think of it. They have us in District 8 now. They've picked off some of our candidates for the House, the legislature of, up in Phoenix. We're now in this 8th legislative, 8th, and it's, obviously, there are threats and lawsuits and stuff work because they have an 11-point advantage, and that's not enough for them, apparently. They never were competitive in District 26. Out of the last 10 elections, only two Democrats have been elected, so we're not, we're not going to change much there, and the possibility of anyone in the bottom of the District 8 ever being elected. Well, we've got wonderful Democratic candidates, but we can't outlaw either Republicans like What happened to the competitive districts? Why can't it be more competitive? Why is Oral Valley cast out? I've worked and retired in Tucson. I volunteer down there. Did you forget about Oro Grande? That's coming up. That's going to be right up in their area in Pima, in Pinal County. It's going to be a big development just opposite the city of Oracle. Please follow the Pima County line. There's different rules up there and in their neck of the woods. Give Oral Valley Tucson roots instead of Pima, instead of Pinal County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sammy Hamed, representing South from Tucson. Not here? Okay. Our next three speakers, Joanne Evans, followed by Greg Wagner, followed by Justin Schmidt. So our next speaker is Joanne Evans, precinct committee person in Pinal County.
Hello. My name is Joanne Evans, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. It's Evans, E-V-A-N-S. I live in Pinal County in Saddle Brook. I do my shopping, my grocery shopping of any kind in Oral Valley in Tucson. I use the medical facilities there. My mailing address is Tucson. I am interested in keeping communities of interest together per draft map District 2. Saddle Brook has nothing, absolutely nothing, in common with Northern Arizona. I've lived there for 10 years, and I've never been to Northern Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Wagner, representing South from Pima.
I want to first thank the Commission for this very thankless work, but a lot of people have been thanking you guys today, so I guess you guys maybe feel a little bit better about your job. My name is Greg Wagner. My, I spell my last name as W-A-G-N-E-R, and I live in what would, and your current maps would be CD3, LD3. And when you guys are looking at tweaking the maps, I mean, obviously, you need to first focus on meeting the federal requirements, but I also want to see the districts becoming more competitive and also protecting communities of interest. And when I'm looking at the maps, I see that LD3 butts up against LD11, and LD3 and LD11 are basically not that, neither of them are that very competitive. And then one thing you could do is maybe move up the district from LD3 further up to maybe Tangerine, and to make that district more competitive, because I see as a community of interest, West Tucson having more in common with Morana, than saying Morana having in common with Casa Grande, which LD11 is in right now. So thank you again for your time, and hope you guys have a fun selection process.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Schmidt, representing South from Pima.
Justin Schmidt, S-C-H-M-I-D-T. When I was growing up, I was taught that gerrymandering is a bad word. It is bad because it makes it so that all of us do not get a fair shot at equality, and it's bad because it makes our system very biased. Now, some people have forgotten what gerrymandering means. Gerrymandering comes from the term, a legislature or the parties of the legislature are using districting lines to promote their own interests in opposition to the interests of we as the citizens of that area. And I would say a corollary of that is special interests. Now, special interest is bad. We all know that. Oh, if it's mine, oh, it's them, and then it's good. And so I plead to the Commission to consider that their job on the congressional districts, I think, was outstanding. You know, the complaints about District 1, oh, it's big. Well, remember, way back, Mo Udall had the entire state, except for a small area of Pima County that he had to handle. There was no internet. There was no Facebook. There was no Skype, and you couldn't pay your phone bills. It all worked quite well. So I don't think that size itself is a problem. Now, I don't know what the problem is or why people are complaining about that. I don't want to get into that. I think that's beyond the purpose here. But my point here is that I think we're all Arizonans. We should all try to work together and not to be separating each other. I was also taught that competition is a good word. Competition is the American way. That's how we make things better. And if we don't have competition, then we have somebody who is able to be unfair to at least part of the population. That's not what I want in my America, my Arizona. So I guess in conclusion, what I want to say is I congratulate you as the Commissioners. You've done an outstanding job. I think you've had a lot of vitriolist attacks at various points, and you've stood up to those. I commend you on that. If I had one little minor criticism, I would say try to make the legislative districts a little more competitive. But I trust you. I want you to keep your spirits right and do the right thing for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Martin Drozdoff, Christine Lee Olin, and Frank Oliveri. So this is Martin Drozdoff, representing South from Tucson.
Right, hi. Yes, that's D-R-O-Z-D-O-F-F. And I am from Casas Adobis. In fact, I'm vice president of the Casas Adobis Neighborhood Association. But in addition to that, I'm representing myself, not Casas Adobis Neighborhood Association. So I've been living in the northwest of Arizona for, you know, Tucson here, for 31 years. And first off, I want to thank all of you for your personal sacrifice, for your extreme efforts to try and make competitive districts. I know this has been a big charge on yourselves and on your family and on your personal life. So I really appreciate all that you've done. Okay? And in addition to that, I want to say gerrymandering is what we have right now. Gerrymandering comes from England, a term, where the, I think it was Lord Gerrymander, actually, is where they got the term from. And that's what we have now, where constituent interests would change areas to make sure that they get reelected. And that's not what we want. We want what your charge is. Your charge is to make competitive districts. And so far, you're doing a pretty good job, I think, on the congressional level. Of course, being in the northwest for 31 years, I have my own feelings about Oral Valley. I feel like they're our neighbors. I could see where they would easily fit into District 2. As far as Dove Mountain, Morana, well, they would be more, the District 3 that you have, they're more rural, and they're more, that would fit in more with District 3. As far as Saddle Brook goes, well, that's an adult, isolated community, part of Pinal County, which is central Arizona. And I think they've made their choice in isolating themselves from Tucson, isolating children, isolating themselves from the community. You know, they want it both ways. Well, that's fine. They're allowed to want things both ways, but that's not reality. In terms of what I would ask from you folks, you've tried so hard, please keep up with this competitive districts. It's an impossible task, I know, but that's really a wonderful thing that you folks are trying to do. You're working miracles. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Lee Olin from Tucson.
Good evening, all of you wonderful people here doing this for day in and day out. My name's Christine Lee Oler. Last name is O-L-E-R. I live in Tucson. Last time I spoke, a few weeks ago, I was just Lee Oler, so don't put me in there twice, please. Okay? I came at quarter to six, signed in, got turned in my blue sheet or whatever it is, and I only had one thing to say: Please make the districts competitive. And since I've sat here for almost three hours, I've added to that list. We do have problems in Pima County in southern Arizona because we don't have enough competitive districts. One of the speakers said we deserve more competitive districts than we have. I agree with that speaker. I think that, for example, some of our people are disenfranchised right away by the primaries because the primary candidates are basically the people that are going to win the general. There's no, the way that the districts were previously drawn, the general election was just a farce because it was done by the primary, and that needs to be fixed. I was personally thinking of 26, LD26 drawn at River Road, and the old LD26. But that isn't a good system, to have these people pre-selected, and then when the election comes, and what are we going to do? Nothing. And the good people have run against each other in those races. I would say the Democrats have been really good. It's going to keep this partisan, but it's just slipped out. So the other thing that I want to talk about is that the people in Saddle Brook and Oral Valley and Morana are wanting to be down with us out of the district, the top district. And we, I don't know why, one lady said, well, I buy my groceries in Oral Valley. Well, go ahead and buy your groceries in Oral Valley, but stay up in the district that the committee has put you in. That's, you can do other things down in Tucson, too, but your election will be in the other Justin Schmidt made a wonderful statement, and I'll just say that. You can refer to his, because he did a good job on that. We need to remain independent. You were doing with that. And we need to also have competitive districts because we deserve more down here than we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Oliveri, representing Northwest Conservatives from Pima. After Frank will be Steve Dotson, Anita Davis, and Paul Hiltz.
Frank Oliveri, O-L-I-V-I-E-R-I, I, too, am from Northwest Conservatives. I live in the unincorporated section of northwest Pima County, in which about, Northwest Conservatives is about 700 members. Thank you for today, and let me address the Commission. Our group is very concerned that the redistricting commission has lost sight of what the voters wanted. We also want to know a little bit about, we'd like to have a little bit of information regarding the lost 90 minutes of video testimony that is missing, October 13th meeting in Flagstaff. That's a testimony disagreeing with the Flagstaff 40. So we'll put that on record. In regards to southern Arizona, neither CD or LD maps make any sense. Let me read quickly. I'll finish within two minutes. Let me read from the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission Legal Counsel Overview by Joseph Cranfield and Muriel Grady. Section 2, subsection B, "The IRC must create districts of equal population in grid-like patterns."
Can you?
I'm sorry. Okay. "The IRC must create districts of equal population in a grid-like pattern across the state. Working from the map, the IRC must next adjust the grid as necessary to accommodate the following six goals. District shall comply with the United States Constitution. Congress districts shall have equal population to extent practical, and state legislative districts shall equal population. District shall geographically compact. The contiguous..." The contiguous extendable, and contiguous to the extent practical. District boundaries shall represent communities of interest to the extent practical. The other two extend practical district lines using variable geographic features, city, town, county boundaries, undivided census, tracts. To the extent practical, competitive districts should be favored to where we do not create no significant determinant to the other goals. Throughout the process and navigating through these first two phases, the IRC must exclude party registration by the voting history from the initial phase of mapping process, but may use the data to test mapping for compliance goals. So, section B, the numerical order of six goals, competitiveness is number six. Goals 1 and 2 numerically correct. Goals 3, 4, and 5, geographically compact, communities of interest, and invisible geographic features are far from meeting the criteria. The CD 1 draft map places rural counties like Coconino, Navajo, and Apache with suburban communities like Marana, Oro Valley, Saddle Brook, and unincorporated northwest Pima County. The Navajo, Apache nations do not share the same visions, issues, concerns that Pima-Pinal do. They are sovereign nations to their own specific goals. CD 2 should include Marana, Oro Valley, Saddle Brook, and unincorporated northwest Pima County, including Aravale, Picture Rocks, Casas Adobis, and Tortalita, which are in southern Arizona, not in Navajo or Apache County. There is no common interest. In the new LD 9, the Casas Adobis area is in unincorporated northwest of Pima County, does not share the same interest of downtown Tucson, nor the universities such as medical facilities, doctors, hospitals, shopping, and valleys, schools. Sorry. Want to finish within your two minutes. In LD 9, the Casas Adobis area in unincorporated northwest of Pima County does not share the same interest of downtown Tucson, or the universities such as medical facilities, doctors, hospitals, shopping, and schools. We are more in common with Marana and Oro Valley. It is clear we need to reevaluate these maps. Southern Arizona should not have our representatives be from central or northern Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Dotson, representing self from Marana.
It's Steve Dotson, D.O.T.S.O.N. First of all, when I got this at the door, I thought it was kind of funny. I thought it might something my three-year-old son drew. This is, this is kind of ridiculous. This size of this map for this one district is larger than the state of New Hampshire, the entire state, and you expect one representative to cover that entire area. There is no way on earth the people from Marana have anything in common with their living habits with regards to shopping, hospitals, doctors, anything, the people of northeastern Arizona, along the Grand Canyon, or in the very southeastern corner. This is pathetic. With regards to the legislative districts, you've seemed to punish the people of Marana or the southern part of the new District 11 by including the people from Tempe, Casa Grande, and Maricopa. They have nothing in common either. They are separated by more than 100 miles. The congressional district is separated by several hundred miles. And I know that we've read in the past the size of the districts, but with the ability to draw the maps today, I'm sure you could have made it a little easier on us. Arizona has roughly 13, well, has 13 counties of a total population of about 1.6 million people, according to our 2010 census. That's enough to make at least two rural counties, or two rural congressional districts, an ideal district having roughly 710,000 residents. This commission should draw at least two districts completely outside of metro Phoenix and metro Tucson, one in eastern and one in western Arizona. No rural county should be joined with any part of the two larger metropolitan areas. The draft map does not comply with our Arizona constitution in many ways. Districts are much less compact than those represented in previous maps. The districts do not respect the rural communities of interest, and all of District 9, shown on the draft map, has a connection to metro Phoenix or Tucson areas. I just find it funny that we're having to punish the people of Oro Valley, Marana, and Saddle Brook by splitting them up when they are communities that are the same-minded people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Onita Davis, representing Smart Girl Politics from Pima. After Onita is Paul Hiltz, Linda Rosenthal, and Claire Morgan.
Commissioners, my name is Onita Davis, O-N-I-T-A-D-A-V-I-S. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you again. I find it rather difficult to speak right now because it seems like those of us who have a difference of opinion have been under attack all afternoon. So, isn't it wonderful to live in the great United States of America where we can agree to disagree and still be respectful of each other? CD 1, to me, is the perfect example of a manipulated electoral district. It's not competitive, it's not compact, it's not respectful of geographic and county boundaries. It does not keep communities of interest together, nor does it prevent the splitting of counties. And although some people might disagree with me on the importance of communities of interest, I do have that right to hold that opinion. Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Marana should be moved into CD 2, thereby making both CD 1 and CD 2 more compact. These communities are not close to northern Arizona and have nothing in common with them and could not be well-served by one representative. Now, we can agree until the end of time that, yes, modern technology has made it easier for us all to communicate. That does not change the fact that northern Arizona has very specific issues that are important to them. Flagstaff, Prescott, Verde Valley share economic development interests, transportation, education, forest restoration, water management, medical, and healthcare issues, and of course, tourism. Those issues are unique to that area, just as the issues and interests of Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, and Marana are unique to our area. And certainly, the Navajo and Apache nations have acknowledged that those nations do not have the same interests as the non-reservation portions of the currently drafted CD 1. They want to be represented by someone who is going to look out for their interests. And because they are quote-unquote "an effective category," that seems to be okay, but it's not okay for the residents of Oro Valley, Marana, and Saddle Brook to feel the same way. Now, you may hear this again before the end of the evening because it's a statement that was made by my favorite constitutionalist, but I think it bears being repeated. Making areas competitive is based on the democratic idea of majority rule only, which always leads to majority tyranny. We are a republic. Republics are about majority rule with minority consent. It is not a one-way street, and that's all I hear. And it's rooted in the concept of representation. The more varied the representation, the more discussion there will be about legislation. But representation is not about parties. All I hear is Democrats versus Republicans, and I'm an independent and I'm not a piece of furniture. I vote too. It is about communities of interest having a voice. The Marana, Oro Valley, and Saddle Brook communities of interest certainly had those attributes before being moved into CD 1. Please move us to CD 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Hiltz, representing self from Tucson. After Paul is Linda Rosenthal and Claire Morgan and Tracy Schenkman.
Hello. Thank you. My name, last name is Hiltz, H.I.L.T.S., and I'm from LD 28, just representing myself. Madam Chair and Honored Commissioners, welcome. Thank you for your time and your service. Just your stamina alone is very impressive. I came before you folks a while back to ask to keep, with regard to congressional districts, the mass of mainstream Republican voters east of central Tucson associated with the mass of Democratic voters in the north end of LD 28 in order to keep the competitive balance that has kept our representatives from both parties attentive to the voters' needs. You managed to do that in this congressional map, and I really appreciate your efforts. That, plus the fact that you managed overall to add a whole district that was more competitive, thus keeping the competition more even, more possible for the future, together, that means to me personally that you have fulfilled the independent nature of your commission from Proposition 106, and I thank you for that. Everybody I know has problems with the maps as drawn. I hope we can fix that. I would really like to see the folks in Saddle Brook and Oro Valley attended to, but given the problems of population, if you take that group of folks and put them into 2 where I am now, we had to lose 40,000 voters to go from 8 to 2. I don't know what you would do with those other voters to make the balance redressed. So, I have to, I have to say that we should endorse this map as drawn until something can be done to redress that other balance. I think that this is as good as I can suggest at this time. With regard, oh, there's also one other note that no one has mentioned. CD 8 has the largest number of veterans of any congressional district in the United States. Keeping Fort Wachuka and Davis-Monthan in one congressional district helps to ensure that those people will be served by whoever their representative is, and I thank you for that. And so, I have other comments about the legislative map, but I'll have to keep them for another time. Thank you very much for your service, and have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too. Our next speaker is Linda Rosenthal, Citizens for Common Sense Redistricting from Tucson. After Linda, Claire Morgan, Tracy Schenkman, and Peg Sutherland Jones.
Linda Rosenthal from Tucson, R-O-S-E-N-T-H-A-L. And I'm talking here again about my community of interest and my first letter. I lived in, lived here since 1973. We've raised our children and now enjoy watching our grandchildren. Growing up in the same area, we have many horse properties and are right near the Tancoverty Wash. We enjoy the bypass and hiking, available within riding and walking distance. I was going to skip down here. The rural areas need to have districts that will address their specific needs that cannot be represented in the suburban metropolitan areas. There are many natural boundaries that seem to have been ignored during this process. We're wondering, why are rural areas being combined with the metropolitan area? Here is a suggestion that will address this matter. The 2010 census shows Arizona's 13 rural counties have a total population of 1,594,637 residents. That's enough to make at least two rural congressional districts with an ideal district having 7,110, 710,224 residents for two districts. That would leave 174,189 people who could be incorporated into other districts close to them. Cochise, Graham, Greenland County have approximately 170,000 people. They could be added to two southern districts by adding them to eastern and northwest Pima County and northwest Santa Cruz County. The eastern and western rural districts can make those choices in the north. We are concerned about the southern rural districts. The current maps does not allow for any rural southern Arizona representation in Congress. We realize that your job is a difficult one. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker is Claire Morgan, representing self from Tucson.
My name is Claire Morgan, last name M-O-R-G-A-N. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Arizona has a republican form of government, little r, as guaranteed and required by the Constitution of the United States and our own state constitution. Consequently, our laws are made by elected representatives in a state legislature. The purpose of a state legislature is to make laws for the entire state, laws that have been deliberated on, deliberated on, by all members of the legislature. Those members represent the people of various districts. They are not there to represent the concerns of particular political parties, although unfortunately, they do. The districts are to be composed of communities of interest. That is, areas of similar topography, cultural resources, and like-mindedness that will send a representative to represent and defend that district's interests. If these districts create safe seats for some parties, so be it. The emphasis should not be on competitiveness. Majoring on competitiveness focuses on parties and not on the protection of the people's rights to be represented fairly in a district composed of people with similar concerns, that is, communities of interest. The legislature must have voices from all the communities of interest in order to make just laws. To emphasize political party competitiveness means that the legislature will be dominated by party interests, not the interests voiced by the various varied communities we have around our state. Besides, more and more people are registering as independents. Why would Democrat-Republican parity be the driving factor for district lines? Our state and our country are not democracies, but republics. The goal of districts in a republic is to have as many different voices as possible from the various communities of interest in order to discuss, deliberate, and decide on effective laws. You should not be looking for more districts that are competitive, but more districts that represent the various communities of interest so that the people have a voice. The redistricting is about the people, not parties. Your maps eviscerate Glendale, putting parts of it into five separate districts in the LD maps. Cochise County is lumped in with northern Arizona, two areas widely diverse. Any representative from that district would have to juggle competing interests. Fountain Hills is completely detached from its surrounding areas and put with separate and very different community of interest. Please stop focusing on political parties. We, the people, want representatives that are a voice for our communities of interest. Some of those communities will be conservative. Some of them will be liberal. Others will be a mixture. We want our rights and interests protected, not the interests of political parties. Let the parties compete for the right to represent we, the people. They have to compete in the marketplace of ideas. The people are not here to serve the parties or to serve the government. The parties and government are here to serve the people. And one other comment. The way that you get more people involved in local politics is to start practicing federalism, where the power is taken away from Washington, D.C., and put back in the counties and cities and states where it belongs. Then people will compete. Look at the history. It'll prove it.
Our next speaker is Tracy Schenkman, representing self from Tucson.
Hello. My name is Tracy Schenkman. It's spelled S-C-H-E-I-N-K-M-A-N. And I want to thank the commission for its work on the congressional map and the legislative map. I think you guys have been doing a very, very difficult job. It's been a very arduous and combative process, and I know that you've done your best to be faithful. fair to everybody, which is an almost impossible task, but you've done a very good job on the congressional map, and I want to thank you for that. One of the things, it's not, it's not an ideal map. It's not what I would consider to be a perfect map. There are problems with it that maybe or maybe not can be, maybe can be solved, maybe can't be solved, but I really appreciate the work that you've done on it, and I really appreciate the fact that there are three competitive districts within that map. If you do tweak the congressional map, please do so to increase competitiveness or to maintain competitiveness within those districts that you have created. I say this despite the fact that my family has property up in northern Arizona, and I'm, that property is actually in District 4, which is a relatively non-competitive district. But I still think that competitiveness in at least a reasonable portion of our congressional districts is a good thing for the state. I view the situation with Saddle Brook and Oro Valley in, being in CD 1, as actually beneficial to Tucson. It gives Tucson a voice in three different congressional districts. Maricopa County has quite a number of congressional districts that have voices for it. Tucson only had two. Now we have three that have voices, and I think that that could be to our advantage. So, I think that I'd like to leave the congressional map situation right now and discuss the legislative map, which is the, my area of main concern right now. The legislative draft map is very interesting. However, I think that it could be improved by making at least four or five additional safe districts into competitive districts. Now, because the Republicans hold a larger majority, this would probably be from mostly Republican districts. My concern is that there seems to be packing in both directions. There are some districts that are heavily packed Democratic and some districts that are heavily packed Republican. It wouldn't take much to tweak those just a little bit to make more competitive districts. I would appreciate it if you would consider that, and I thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peg Sutherland Jones, representing self from Pima. How about Max Rubin, representing self from Pima? How about Patricia Maish, representing self? Okay, after Patricia, Richard Elias, Keith Van Heeniken, and Pam Branch.
I'm a registered independent in the proposed Congressional District 2 and Legislative District Number Nine, Number Nine. Thank you for taking on this daunting task. I know you've worked hard with lots of problems. I cannot stress how pleased I was when Proposition 106 passed in 2000. This state is not as red as some would want us to believe. According to my calculations, there are approximately 36% Republicans, 33% independents, and 32% Democrats. Please do not be bullied or intimidated by the opposition that you have encountered. Do not let them relax standards that we, the people, have asked for and got with Proposition 106. I understand the dissatisfaction to some degree with District 1. I know you have constraints that are difficult, and although not perfect, I feel the rest of the congressional districts are reasonable and workable representations of our state. The legislative districts are another matter, and I think need improvement to satisfy the competitive requirement. Thank you again for your work and your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Elias, Pima County Supervisor. I don't see him. Okay. Keith Van Heeniken. Pam Branch, representing self from Pima. How about Scott Wilson, representing self from Morana? After Scott, Diana Rhodes, then Brian Flag, and then Regina Romero.
Hello, my name is Scott Wilson, W.I.L.S.O.N. I'm going to read from the second page of the handout that was handed out this morning, or this evening, which is pretty compliant with the law. But what it basically says is there's a sort of a pecking order, and creation of competitive districts where there is no significant detriment to other goals. Okay, if you're going to respect geographic boundaries, the city of Tucson itself is probably a congressional district. It really is. And that anything, the fact that people of a particular political persuasion tend to live in Tucson is historic. I moved here in 1981. In 1981, there were two parts of Pima County politics you could almost feel. They weren't really official, but they were a feel. Those who lived in the city of Tucson and those who wanted nothing to do with the city of Tucson. We formed a fire district to keep the city of Tucson from encroaching into our suburban areas. The city, this town of Morana is as big as it is. Morana was a little town way out there. Why did it come down to Tucson, to border Tucson? Because those of us who were in suburban areas did not want to become annexed by the city of Tucson. Quite honestly, folks, your, this whole discussion of competitiveness is not in keeping with the law. The law says that communities of interest should be kept together. Community of interest is the city of Tucson, and I think, I did some quick numbers, and pretty close to the incorporated areas of the city of Tucson would pretty much make a congressional district. There would have to be some modifications, obviously, but that's my feeling. The city of Tucson should be a congressional district. The fact that it is a safe district for one party, that is by self-selection, quite honestly. People who wanted all the services and the politics of a city in a metropolitan area chose to live on that side of the city line. Those of us who were more, liked the more rural lifestyle, many of us who were very happy to stay in unincorporated counties became part of small towns in order to keep the city of Tucson. Respect communities of interest. Make Tucson a district. Competitive splitting of the city of Tucson is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Rhodes. Can you hear? No. Brian Flag from Pima. And Regina Romero, Mark Kerr. How about Steve Nygren? Representing vote for Tucson. After Steve is Ken Smalley, Angelica Alvarez, and Jerry Adaboni.
That's Steve Nygren. It's N.Y.G.R.E.N. I'm here to talk about neighborhoods, something that seems to be in the back of everybody's mind but not being showing up in the maps. I think that the community of interest that has been discussed today is probably the stronger vein. We all might be calling upon competition, but when I dialed down in my map, in my area of my city, in Tucson, I was amazed at the way District 10, 1, and 2 actually kind of doglegged into my neighborhood, missing the major streets, missing geographical boundaries, and basically apparently coming up with some sort of map that this lady's firm considers to be an honest representation of a district. I think what we've been hearing is that because of Arizona's topography, natural history, and geography, that these districts that we're seeing are very much not communities of interest, but are some sort of mathematical equation to equality that may be 10 years out of date, or the time the maps are accepted. I hope that there is a way to manipulate or put in public input into the maps. Is that true? I'm making a direct question to the lady here. Is the site still up as far as doing map manipulations? I mean, we were able to mail in, you know, email in maps still. Okay, that's what I was just trying to figure out. That period's going to end when?
We're under a 30-day comment period right now, so...
So, within the 30 days, that's allowable, in other words, okay. That's what I was after. All right, thank you. So again, I believe that tonight we've heard a lot of people talk about competition, but then they've asked for personal adjustments to their district. Interesting. Whereas people who ask about community of interest basically celebrate the natural qualities of their areas and their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Smalley. Not here. How about Angelica Alvarez? Jerry Adaboni, representing Rancho Vestoso from Pima. After Jerry, John Antliff, Gary Gomez, and David Graff.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jerry Adaboni, and that's O.T.T.O.B.O.N.I. I want to address CD 1. It is so gerrymandered that it looks like a salamander, better yet, puffed the magic What was the Commissioner thinking, or what were the Commissioners thinking? It would appear that some of the Democrats and the Republicans are not pleased with this map. For one congressional representative to represent the district would require a helicopter, whereas in other districts that you have drawn, it would take one congressional person two days to drive around in a VW bug, the whole district. This map borders Mexico, New Mexico, Colorado, and Utah, and almost to Nevada. The people in this district in many cities would receive little or no representation. This district, CD 1, is not compact, does not have communities of interest or competitive districts. Instead, Saddle Brook, Oro Valley, Morana, Cochise County, Graham, and Coch, and Greenlee should be moved to CD 2. Thank you very much, and I'm going to leave this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Antliff, representing self from Oro Valley. After John, Gary Gomez, David Graff, Tim Salton.
Thank you. I'm John Antliff, A.N.T.L.I.F.F., double F as in Frank. I'm from Oro Valley, representing myself, and I just want to make a brief statement to the effect that the proposed CD 1 is not compact and does not respect communities of interest. Oro Valley, Morana, and Saddle Brook have nothing in common with Flagstaff. They should be moved into CD 2. That would make both districts more compact and will respect communities of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Gomez, representing self from Pima.
Hi, I'm Gary Gomez, G.O.M.E.Z. I came to speak on primarily CD 1, which is bizarre, to say the least. I really don't understand. I've lived in Flag. It's very much different mentality of Flagstaff from Oro Valley. How that can be tied together is beyond imagination. This district is too large, as was previously mentioned, borders a number of states, and does not respect communities of interest. Communities of interest to me is far more important. People don't buy a house because of what congressional district they're in. They buy a house because of the people that live there, the schools, the activities, and by the Constitution, communities of interest should be respected. This district must be changed. It is just not a workable district whatsoever. Representation will be minimal for one area or the other. If the representative lives in the southern part of the state, they're probably not going to get up to the northern part very often, or vice versa. Legislative districts, a lot of people know a lot more and have made better comments than what I could make on that, but I'm very concerned with CD 1, and I hope that you all will consider taking Oro Valley and bringing it back into, you know, Tucson Metro in some form or another, Congressional District 2 or 3. It just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, David Graff, representing self from Tucson.
Hi, my name is David Graff. That's G.R.A.F.F. First, I want to thank you guys for your time and for listening to all our concerns. There's obviously been a lot of them. My first concern is that the University of Arizona and downtown are combined with South Tucson and Central District 3, while I believe the UVA should probably be in, and most of the neighborhoods that surround it should probably be in Central District, I mean, not Central Congressional District 2, and possibly the two should be split along the train tracks that separate downtown from Fourth Avenue and most of, and a lot of, it's kind of southern Tucson from northern Tucson. My second opinion is that Congressional District 3 should not include parts of both Phoenix and the Phoenix metro area and Tucson, as I don't think any of the communities has any, like, similar interests in terms of, yeah. And I also believe, agree that Central District 1 is a little bit too, too large. I don't think it can represent communities of interest the way it is designed. However, I don't necessarily agree with everyone that Morana and Oro Valley need to be in Central District 2, because doing so might make the district uncompetitive, and I think competitiveness would, is a bigger concern, should be a bigger concern or priority. As for the legislative map, I think, especially in the Phoenix area, I think it's largely uncompetitive the way it is designed. Specifically, LD 23 needs to be redesigned. I think the part where it stretches into Scottsdale, it shouldn't go quite that far to the south, it should, to the south. LD 18 and 26, I think, should be designed a little differently to be more competitive, and LD 30 and 20 need to be changed as well. And similar, and LD 25, LD 22, LD 19, and LD 20 are, in my opinion, not competitive as they are both strongly in favor of one party. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Salton, representing self from Tucson. After Tim is Cheryl Lamona, Dee Pfeiffer, and Benjamin Brookart.
Hi there. My name's Tim, Tim Sultan. It's S.U.L.T.A.N., and I'm from Tucson, and thanks for letting me speak. First, you know, I just want to applaud you. You guys are incredible. You guys are incredible public servants. All the time you're spending on this with your families, your jobs, everything else you have to do, I don't know how you do it. So, thank you. Thank you for doing, and I understand you have a few slings and arrows that have been thrown at you, too, so I appreciate you dodging those and coming back. I, well, who is it? Winston Churchill famously said, "Democracy is the worst form of government, except for all the rest." And it is a messy process that you're doing, but you're making our democracy better, and we're all going to be better for it, so thank you. I came here tonight to speak to competitiveness and to just say that I think you did a great job. I looked at the congressional map, and I live here in Tucson, lived here my whole life, born and raised here, and I think you did great. So, I came just to say, hold steady. You don't need to change a thing. But since I've been here, I've listened to some of these comments, and a lot of folks had good points, and just wanted to address a couple of them. To me personally, the most important thing is competitiveness. So, I think on that mark, you did a great job, at least here in my hometown. And the reason I think it's important, a couple of other folks mentioned it, but it really frustrates me as a citizen that we have sometimes so polarized representatives, that we have folks, you know, on the far left and on the far right, and no one gets along, and we can't get anything done. And I think that competitiveness helps us find the best candidate regardless of party. So, I think that we're all going to be better for it. A lot of folks have mentioned communities of interest, which I hadn't really thought too much about before coming here tonight, but we mentioned Morana, Saddlebrook, and Oral Valley, and, you know, sure, I think that those three clearly are community of interest. I mean, we all think of them as that, it's pretty obvious. And I think what you've done, actually, is you've fixed a lot of the things that were in the old map that didn't really make sense. I mean, we had, you know, a lot of communities of interest that really weren't connected, you know. Currently, I think we have those areas, Oral Valley and the others, in the same district as Naco, which you clearly have nothing in common. So, I think you're actually doing a great job keeping those three together. I grew up in Sam Hughes, and I'm glad to see that you put that back in the district where the rest of Tucson, so that those of us who went to school, you know, on the east side and grew up in Sam Hughes, you know, we feel like we're all sort of in the same area with our friends and neighbors, because that really is a community. So, I guess my point really is to come back to holding steady and continue dodging those bullets if you can, and thank you for your hard work. I think you did it right. So, I know a lot of people have small things they'd like to tweak here and there, but in general, I think you've accomplished your goal. So, I think we can pretty much settle this and go home tonight. So, it was my pleasure speaking with you, and thanks again for the time.
Thank you.
I think Winston Churchill's smiling down upon us. I think you've done your job.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Cheryl Lamona, representing Self from Oral Valley, followed by Dee Pfeiffer, Benjamin Brookhart, and the last request to speak form I have is Barney Brenner.
My name is Cheryl Lamona. It's S-H-I-R-L-L-A-M-O-N-N-A. And as you well know, I'm no stranger to your redistricting meetings, but unlike many who were here tonight, I got involved in this process early on, and not because some college professor or political leader told me to come here and handed me his talking points and told me what I should share with you. My comments are mine. I sat here throughout the night scribbling them, because I worked today and I didn't have time to prepare all of this. They do contain many points that were brought out by others tonight from Oral Valley and Morana, simply because we are a community of interest and we are like-minded. So, in terms of the congressional districts, as many have said before me, CD1 is not compact. It's simply too large for effective representation of the citizens. And while someone mentioned it was okay, you know, back in the days of Mo Udall, I kind of think that the population has grown considerably since then, so that seems to me like a bit of an odd rationale for accepting that reasoning. CD1 also doesn't have any respect for our communities of interest. What on earth could a border town have in common with Sedona or Flagstaff? As far as the LDs, I live in the new LD8, and members of that community have told you repeatedly about the Oral Valley, Morana, Business Card, and the unique relationship that we have with Saddlebrook, and yet you've ignored that community of interest. You've split Morana into LD 11, and you need to make us whole again and put us all into CD2. Finally, we've heard a lot about competitiveness tonight, and for some reason, you and many of the others choose to ignore the requirement of Prop 106, which has been identified as dead last on the handout, and that is that competitive districts are favored where there's no significant detriment to the other goals. And sadly, these maps do offer a significant detriment to our state, and I sincerely hope this round of public hearings is not in vain. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dee Pfeiffer, representing Self from Pima.
Dee Pfeiffer, P-F-E-I-F-F-E-R. I came tonight with some suggestions to the maps, and after I sat here through this whole meeting, I will submit those changes via the website, but mostly, I'm concerned with LD 1, which has now put four solid conservatives against each other. Seems pretty obvious to me, the purpose of doing that. Others have been very complimentary of the Commission, and I too appreciate your time and effort. However, a lot of people mentioned pressures put on the Commission, threatening to the Commission, attacks, being bullied, intimidated, dodging bullets. I just have to wonder why, or if they just don't understand why that is happening to the Commission, that it's due to the misleading party title of our independent Commissioner, the possible unlawful process of choosing the mapping company, and mostly because the Democrats and Chairwoman refuses to testify to the Attorney General and clear up the missteps regarding the scoring sheets and even the destruction of those cards. I really encourage the Commission to be open about that and speak to the Attorney General. I reread Proposition 106 again. I've done it several times, but once again, and I see that it still says that competitiveness is the last priority and is to be considered and accomplished only if a competitive district does not harm the other goals listed. No matter how many people want it to be a competitive district, Prop 106 states otherwise. You need to get it changed if that's what you want it to say. Communities of interest and compactness must take priority over competitiveness per your Prop 106. I voted for Prop 106. It sounded great. It sounded fair. How misleading was it? Five people deciding our fate for 10 years makes no sense. It is far too expensive by the time we get through the legal battle that is sure to follow because of the closed situation with the Board not, or the Commission not reporting and testifying in front of the Attorney General. I hope there is a call for repeal of 106, and let our elected representatives, which we elected, represent us by drawing the lines next time in open session of the Congress where we can all watch it on C-SPAN or whatever, but this has been just an atrocious process. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Benjamin Brookhart, representing Self from Pima, and then followed by Barney
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Benjamin Brookhart, B-E-N-J-A-M-I-N, last name Brookhart, B-R-O-O-K-H-A-R-T. Thank you again for allowing me to speak to you concerning these congressional and legislative districts that are being drawn. I just want to say first off that I represent myself. I don't represent an interest group. I'm not trying to support some organization. I live in the proposed area of Legislative District 11 in Picture Rocks, and I'm a hard worker. I pay my taxes. I vote. And I believe that one of the things that concerns me the most is that we're doing so much to lift one group of people over another group of people rather than just focusing on total population in regards to and respect to geographic areas and communities of like interest. Now, the purpose of you guys drawing up these lines is so that we have equitable representation per population for each district, and I'm concerned that what's going on is that we're trying to determine the outcome of elections, and that is not what we should be doing whatsoever. That should be determined by those who live in their local areas, and that competitiveness should be looked at based on the message of their candidates in their areas, not based on the drawing up of these lines. Now, I have to say that you guys have been working very hard, and that there is a map that you guys put together that I thought was a good sounding board to build off of, and that's the River/Three Border Combo Version 1A map. I have it right here, and I'll certainly issue it to you. But the thing that I liked about it is that you have basically two rural districts, you have three border districts, you have compactness in terms of communities of like interest within the Phoenix area of Maricopa. And the other thing that I liked about it the most was is that you could divide all your legislative districts pretty fairly and evenly among county lines within those districts. So, I'm very confused and puzzled as to why we're not operating off of that map as opposed to the one we currently have now, where the Congressional District Number 1 is clearly disproportionate, and I just would like to suggest that we consider looking at this from a different standpoint, starting off with this River/Three Border Combo Version 1A map, and that we scrap the legislative map completely and start again, so that we fit these legislative districts in within those congressional districts. It'll make sense, and, you know, in regards to that, I mean, even a two-year-old can put this thing together. I mean, it wouldn't be difficult for them to figure out how to put this map together versus what we have now, which is so confusing. So, I'd like to suggest that. Also, in regards to where I live specifically, being in Picture Rocks, Picture Rocks, Morana, Oral Valley, Saddlebrook, all these areas and communities are very tightly knit. Most of my social circles, the industry, the resources, the commerce, is deeply connected, and we're getting split, and I'd ask that that be, once again, put back together. I thank you for your time. I hope that you guys will maintain openness in what I have shared with you tonight. I think that it's reflective of the fact that I'm focusing on the individual and not groups, so that we're having representation based on the total population in a geographic area where people are determining their own destiny because of where they live, not because of these lines being purposely changed around based on party affiliation or racial balancing or any of that. That should not even be a factor, and I appreciate the time that you've given me. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Our next speaker is Barney Brenner, representing Self from Pima.
Yeah, there seems to be one after me that a form was lost.
Christine Bowserman, I don't have one, but maybe it's around somewhere. So, and I'll do a call to the audience afterwards.
My name is Barney Brenner, B-R-E-N-N-E-R. I've got concerns about any number of the districts. In the first decades of our country, voting districts were naturally compact and represented communities of interest. Then a man came along by the name of Eldridge Gary. He ended up being our fifth Vice President, and he drew a district purely for partisan political advantage that was bizarrely drawn and extended through, I believe it was Massachusetts, to pick up voters for something that Ms. Pfeiffer earlier alluded to but didn't state clearly when she said four conservatives were brought together in one district for obvious reasons. But I'll state the reasons. It seems to have been done for purely partisan political advantage, which is against multiple laws and against the spirit of what we're supposed to be doing here. Now, at the time, what Mr. Gary did was legal, and it remained that way through much of the history of our country, where the law allowed legislatures to draw, and these were representatives elected by the people who drew district lines, but they did it within the bounds of the law. Then in the late 90s, the Citizens of Arizona passed Proposition 106, which was supposedly to put an end to such travesties of drawing districts purely for partisan political advantage. And it was intended, it intended us to return to a system which placed a higher priority on keeping communities of interest together, and also, which was, by the way, required under the Voting Rights Act, and in addition, it was to place an emphasis on compactness, which is of crucial consideration to voters. And I think it was our first speaker, Olivia Cahero Bedford, was thrilled that her district was compact, and it would be nice if this consideration was extended to as many other voters and candidates as possible. Someone earlier mentioned the needs of the many and the needs, or the needs of the few. Well, this would certainly be of help to the many, although in this country, the needs of the law are what is paramount, and it was mentioned many, many times tonight, the word competitiveness or competitive districts, but it doesn't matter how many times you mention the word or the phrase, it doesn't change the law. And although it's not the only one, not the only problem district, I mean, take a district that puts Morana, takes it out of Pima County, puts it all the way to the Utah border, the northern border of the state of Arizona, also puts it in a district which goes to the southeast corner of the state of Arizona. You are deliberately diluting communities of interest in violation of the law, including portions of the US Constitution, the Arizona Constitution, the Voting Rights Act, and Prop 106, the very law that you are sworn to uphold. So, if there's any suggestions to be made, it would be similar to one that Benjamin, just a couple of speakers ago, mentioned, to go back to an earlier version and work from there prior to this gerrymandered effort, which is against the law on many levels. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think Christine Bowserman would like to speak, and we'll just need you to fill out a request to speak form.
Okay. Hi. Christine Bowserman, B is in Boy, A-U-S is in Sam, E-R-M-A-N. This is going to be my last time speaking. I was at my son's college last time you were in Tucson, which was why I was not here. I know you've been tracking all my comments, so I started this out wanting four border districts, and I actually had a map I submitted, and something I have seen through the process of this map making is it was too difficult to do. The maps really went all the way up and snaked into Phoenix, and like you, hearing all these comments, nobody seems to really want that. That map that he talked about with the three border districts, I actually liked a lot, too, at one time, but I don't know how much it goes into Phoenix. My point being, I preferred three to four border districts, but I don't know if it'll work. This definitely does not work. I've talked to people who live in ranches out there, and they're afraid, because they're, you know, the guy who was killed, the rancher down there, lives in that little border district, and they know they're not going to get any representation, and they were just even telling me, even with the horrible tragedy of Gabby Giffords, you know, they're not getting representation that's important to them. So, I think we should go back to two. I know on this map, you were asking for a domino effect, so here are some lines. If you move Cochise, Olive Cochise, Graham and Greenlee back into two, Saddlebrook and Oral Valley, and then in Pinellas County, you really could take the rest of that county, which is the Florence, Gold Canyon, Queen Valley, Sandtown, all that, put Pinellas County back in CD1, and then, I don't really know the rest of the area, but I know I've heard a lot from Flagstaff that the county people, the...
Flagstaff that the county people, the non-reservation people, would rather be over in four. So, I don't know exactly how that population would work, but I do know, I just saw some recent math where, actually read it down, there was, the state has a rural population of 1,420,448 people, two congressional districts. If you minus those out, that leaves approximately 174,000. The population of Cochise, Graham, and Greenlee is 170,000, so you could easily do that. The LD areas, we have had hours and hours and hours of testimony in Tucson. You know, it's not horribly, it looks like I'll be with some of you in the LD area. But Rita Ranch, you know, that, a lot of the testimony of communities' interests of Pima County needs to be listened to a little bit more with that. Tancaverdi with the Houghton Corridor, Rita Ranch, Sarita and Green Valley being switched, are just some simple little switcheroo's you could make there. And, and since everybody wants it more competitive, I've been in a CD area with the Democrat for eight years, so give me some Republicans in there, so we can give them all what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that we've missed that wanted to speak tonight? Okay, wow. Well, we thank you for hanging in with us, and for anybody still watching online, if they are. Let me, let me turn it over to my fellow commissioners and see if they have anything to say. Commissioner Sturts?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. For anybody that's still here, I wanted to thank you for still sticking around. I was trying to keep a tally tonight of people that came up and complimented us on our hard work and then wanted competitive districts, and they equaled each other. So, thank you for the compliments, and thank you for asking for competitive districts. It was a, it was an interesting exercise to find out the balance of talking points that were looking at competitiveness versus looking at, at independent thought and independent thinking. I'm hoping that as we move through these last half of, of comment periods that we're going to get, that we're going to get a lot of people coming out with independent thought and independent thinking and checking the talking points at the door, because it's, it's not doing us any good other than piling a bunch of stuff on the record. So, but thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. And Commissioner McNulty?
Thank you for sharing your evening with us.
And with that, the time now is 9:56 PM, and we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming out tonight.